We're ready to get started. So, thank you all for being with us today. I think we actually, Al's not here yet. Oh, there he is. It's great. All right. Now we got to wrap. So, thank you all for being with us for our work session today. And does everybody have a copy of the agenda? So, we're going to be going over issues related to infrastructure and planning in Buncombe County, which is obviously a big issue for our growing community and a topic of strong public interest. So, appreciate everyone being with us today to talk about some of the different things happening in the community related to infrastructure planning and how our community is going to grow in the coming years. So, I appreciate everyone's time this afternoon. And Nate is going to coordinate this for us. So, Nate, I'm going to turn it over to you to get us started.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Newman, Commissioners. Good to have you. It's good to have everyone here in the audience. We've got quite a presentation for you today. It's definitely comprehensive in nature. First thing I'd like to do, just because they're going to be part of our discussion later on, but there are a couple of panelists that will have to probably sneak out due to the longevity of the session. So, if it's okay, panelists, could you just real quickly, start with you Chad, just introduce yourself and please introduce your representative agency or utility.
Chad Pierce, and I represent the City of Asheville Water Resources Department. I'm the Engineering Services Manager for the Water Resources Department.
Sorry, Jason. So, I'm Jason Walls. I'm the District Manager with Duke Energy, and I do get my own table. So, if anybody, if any of the PSNC guys need an extra table, I've got a chair.
I'm Cole Hood with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. I worked right here in Asheville as the Division of Project Development.
Troy Wilson with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. I'm the District Engineer here in Asheville.
I'm Erica Anderson with the Land Management Council for the National Transit Department.
Tom Hardy from the Metropolitan Sewers District, General Manager.
I'm Lee McRath with PSNC Energy, our Manager of Large Accounts. We brought three of us to make sure we answer any questions.
They've got the smallest table.
I drove. I'm Mike Lewis, Regional Engineer for PSNC Energy.
Don Hollings with PSNC Energy.
Okay. Thank you, panelists. Chair Newman has already introduced the topic today. This is an infrastructure planning presentation and overview, and it's a work session. We have other representatives that are present in the room. We've brought to you some staff from Buncombe County Transportation. We have Matt Cable with us today. We have Matt Stone from Permits and Inspections, Josh O'Connor from Parks and Recreation, and we have the professionals who you've already met. Also, Commissioners, in front of you today, you have a blizzard of paper. We did that to help you along in the presentation. We'll be making numerous references to the plans in front of you. A couple of things that you have, you have a copy of the land use plan, the sustainability plan, you have a list of zoning districts, as well as a copy of the PowerPoint slides. We did also include an article that we'll be making reference to later on in the presentation, and we have included, for general reference, a map of the Buncombe County greenways and trails. So, the way this is going to work today, we just thought, let's just have a discussion, okay? That's the best way for fruitful information to be shared, as well as a path to move forward. When we start talking about infrastructure, we're going to have a conversation about growth in general. We're at that juncture, and that's the best way for staff to hear you in terms of formulating policy and implementing changes that you'd like to see to the ordinances that we maintain and that we enforce. We're going to have an open dialogue with the Commissioners and with the panelists once we open it up to the individual industry experts you see here before you on your panel. They also have included some supplemental slides that they'd like to share with you as well. And then we're going to move into a future growth discussion, and then we're going to leave it for questions and, to your liking, adjournment. So, let's just go over a couple of quick facts about Buncombe County, and let's give you a couple comparisons to see where we stack up. Estimated population, 257,607. That's a 2017 population. We have six municipalities located within our fair county, roughly 660 square miles of land area. Before you, you'll see a quick figure on the roads. Maintenance of approximately 1,260 miles of water lines, roughly the same, a little under 1,078 miles of sewer, almost 7,000 fire hydrants, 21 fire departments, which is inclusive of the municipalities, and 14 total miles of trails/greenways. In comparison, if you look at Cabarrus County, they have 206,872, and New Hanover County with 227,198. The difference is they're about half the size in terms of the size of the county itself. As we move through the presentation, I'd like to draw your attention in the upper left-hand corner. You're going to see some symbology that just helps you really tie in what slide we're looking at and what we're trying to convey in our message to you. So, we tried to keep it really simple. Drop for water, sewer cap for sewer, flame for natural gas, the bicycle for transportation, zoning, well, it's a zoning map, recycle sign for landfill, flood is a stream, and growth is an upward trend. So, basically, what I'm going to do is provide a quick overview of the different areas that we have panelists for. I'm just going to give some quick facts. You're going to get most of your information derived from the individual panelists themselves. So, let's talk a little bit about water in the county. Potable water is supplied by the City of Asheville. It's also supplied by the municipalities. The greatest majority of the water is supplied by the City of Asheville, and it comes from two of the most pristine reservoirs in the area, North Fork and Beetree. There's a long history of water distribution in the county. We're not going to get into it. There's been multiple acts that have been passed through the legislative legislature that date all the way back to the Great Depression. The difference is, in Buncombe County, Asheville, there's not the ability to charge differential water rates, unlike when you go out to other communities, like, say, Marion is able to charge, and McDowell County is able to charge a differential water rate to county residents that are not part of the jurisdiction. If you look at the distribution, that's...
Nate, can't some of the other municipalities charge differential rates?
They can. I just used that as a...
It's just the one that can, right?
My wife works for Marion, so I'll just use that as a...
Sir, what?
My wife works for Marion, so I just use that as an example.
Right, but like Weaverville?
Sure.
Others in the county, they don't all run their own water system, but they can.
That's right. Unique to Asheville.
Right.
Don't they basically buy water from Asheville?
Weaverville?
No. Chad would probably tell you that. Black Mountain does, others do.
But some of them have their own water sources too, right? Like Woodfin and Black Mountain?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, we were a redundant supply for most folks.
Great, thanks.
And some are a certain percentage, like, Black Mountain supplies about 80% of their water and buys the other percentage from Asheville. So, the distribution is high in terms of Asheville's provision for water to residents. You can see that there. What we're also going to try to do is present facts and also graphically represent it to you in map form. What we have mapped before you is basically the water hydrants. There are some concerns with homeland security, so we're not able to disseminate all the water line information, but we can sort of paint a picture with the water, the fire hydrants that you see here. They're concentrated to our valley locations, and they surround our incorporated areas. Asheville, as well as the other municipalities, have what's called a water availability and allocation process. So, when a developer is looking to, say, put in a new multifamily development or open a manufacturing plant, they go through this allocation process to make sure that there's adequate supply in order to meet that demand. The other thing that's tricky sometimes, too, is every day we get calls from folks that will say, hey, I'm right near a water line. We'd like to get service. Well, the first thing they're going to do is call Chad or one of the municipalities, and they may find out, actually, that's a trunk line that supplies the entire city of Asheville. We'd have to put four reducing valves on that to supply you water. So, while it may be immediately available in the area, it also depends on the type of pressure that's supplied. Sometimes even we have what are called lower-capacity lines. Chad can speak to this as well, but there's just not enough pressure to allow one additional home even sometimes. MSD is its own nonprofit publicly-owned utility. They operate all throughout Buncombe County. They also maintain a wastewater treatment plant in Woodfin, and they have a board. There should be at least one board member in this room. I believe Jim Holland's with us. So, there are others on the Commissioners. Multiple people on the board.
Everybody wants to be observable, you know?
So, MSD also has an availability letter and allocation process as well, and it's just to assure that there is the capacities to support whatever development or industry is coming down the pipe. So, graphically represented, again, you'll see the trend. We hug the more urban areas. We're in our valley locations, and I'm sure our MSD representative will tell you, we operate on gravity. Mostly. Mostly. We don't like pump stations, right? So, I'd like you all to look at this map. What this map is showing you is what we tried to do is build in what future capacity looks like. These are properties 100 feet within water and sewer lines, and this just sort of gives you an idea to build and show you what areas could be further expanded that are within a reasonable distance. It doesn't mean all these areas can be serviced, but it just sort of builds a picture. The one thing I do see off the bat that mapped automatically is Montreat does have an ETJ that's intact, and I would not say that all those areas are serviceable. You'll notice that to the north of the town itself, and most of those are on the side of a mountain. So, that's one anomaly that I will point out on this map.
Nate, just on water and sewer, some of this information might be good to put on the county website, because we get questions all the time about water and sewer. Is it available out here? Is it closed? That would answer a lot of questions with some people that are in some of the outline areas.
It's a good point. Later on, we're going to be talking about what we can do, and actually, the Planning Department's going to be up for a website upgrade soon, so we'd like to kind of give you a teaser of some of the things we're thinking about that might help our public.
Teed that up, right. Teed that up before you did.
Yeah. So, let's see. Natural gas, PSNC, another representative. They have a whole group with them today. They supplied us with a couple of maps to sort of look at where we are, state of the state with gas lines in the county. What you see before you, it's a little pixelated, because we had to try to make it large enough to see, is what the current lines look like, as well as some additions that PSNC is proposing. Note 221 corridor going north to Marion. That's one thing that PSNC sees as a growth area. They can speak more to that when we get to them, but we just thought we'd like to show that, as well as the study corridor in Asheville, which follows Brevard Road. That's another project I know they're excited about, and you guys are currently going through the planning phases and getting your route approved and going through the federal and state levels in the Utilities Commission. Okay? So, transportation corridors. These are the areas where we most likely are going to see our development, because utilities are present. NC DOT, they're going through a new phase where they're looking at multi-modal transportation, and not just vehicles. You know, I went to a presentation recently, and they said, you know, we don't just do cars. We do airplanes, buses, bikes, pedestrians, and really, it's kind of seeing, when they do expansions, they're looking at areas, you know, what, if we can do a sidewalk here, can we get you to pitch in, community? Maybe you do a local match. Maybe we can extend a sidewalk somewhere. And opportunities like that are good, because it gives us the ability to grow where we can and extend services where the rural meets the urban areas. Long Shoals Airport Road, Pisgah Highway on here, you see 70 hugging next to 40 and New Lester Highway, Barnersville Highway, although Barnersville is one of our more rural areas that we don't see a lot of growth in. Parks and Greenways. There are a number of items that are shown on here, including future trail networks. There's also the Mountains to See Trail, Font of Flora, which is the, the goal is eventually to have a trail that runs from Buncombe County through McDowell County. Also have, you know, Charles Owen Park. You've got the Warren Wilson Trail System. You've got the Buncombe County Sports Park out here. So, we have a number of facilities, and the goal in mind is to eventually connect them all through a trail system that gets folks not only just to one area of the county, but really extends it to where folks can sample nature and get out there in a way that doesn't just involve a vehicle. Another element of public transportation that we'd like to showcase is our mountain mobility system. We have Matt Cable here for specific questions, but essentially, we operate three routes, the North Buncombe, Black Mountain, Inca Canler Route. All of these areas or all of these routes connect to the Asheville Redefines Transportation System. So, it does get you to another public transportation system that has a much more wide and broad range within the urban areas themselves. There's also demand response and subscription services available for those areas that are not included within these three routes that Matt could speak to if there are specific questions. And we did include some, just some facts from the last fiscal year that we put up on the map as well. A lot of people wouldn't think that the landfill is part of infrastructure, but it is. It's not an unlimited resource, and it's certainly important. As we continue to grow, we're going to produce more trash. So, having a plan that speaks to our future needs is definitely important. We operate the municipal service and the construction and debris landfills separately. That helps us extend the life of the landfill. And another thing we'd like to showcase is the, we don't just flare off that gas, the landfill gas. We actually produce electricity with it, enough actually to power 1,100 homes. So, another Buncombe County construction project that's currently underway is the transfer station. So, this transfer station's been in need of an upgrade, and we are moving forward with that upgrade. This will add some safety components to the project itself, and it allows for folks to drop off recyclables and trash. And also, a lot of people don't understand this, every trash truck from the City of Asheville goes to this Buncombe County facility before that waste is hauled off to the landfill itself. You actually need different trucks to get to the landfill. They're typically longer, and they're more of a rectangle shape than just our traditional trash truck that loads from the back and puts dumpsters on the top. So, Buncombe County zoning. It was established in 2009. It's been around for almost a decade now. Zoning is not perfect. Zoning is a study, and it goes all the way back to Euclid versus Ambler. It goes back to the early century, part of the century. So, at first, the idea was to separate inappropriate uses from more prevalent uses that you might find in an area. So, if you had a single-family neighborhood, you obviously wouldn't want an industry plopped right in the middle of it. We learned those lessons throughout United States history. Now, what we're moving towards is more of a mixed-use pattern. What we initially tried to do is just understand what the county needs were based on the uses that we had going on. So, when we established countywide zoning at the time, you only had Beaver Dam and Limestone. Those were the two areas that had zoning. What this did is it extended it out to the county. It clustered the more urbanized areas around the municipalities. Those are where you see your more traditional districts. Hold on to the next slide, and I'll show you an example of that. And it ringed those with less dense districts and overlays. To your right, you actually see, this is the Beaver Dam area. The blue represents the steep slope areas. The brown is a protected ridge. So, basically, what that does is it maps out your either side, either fall side of your ridge lines. There's also, this is in vicinity of the Blue Ridge Parkway, so you're seeing a little bleed over from the Blue Ridge Parkway overlay itself. So, what does that look like? Well, it includes the following graphic representation on this slide. The OU, the Open Use, this is the majority of the county. It's our more rural areas, and it's more appropriate to the rural nature, the more agriculture uses. It allows for more flexibility in what can be put on the ground, but it's also constrained by infrastructure. We don't have the water and sewer service that you find in the more urban areas. So, it's important now to realize, let's have a conversation about urban and rural level of service. If you're in the Planning Department, ring-ring, phone call comes in, someone from New Jersey, so, in Barnersville, you going to get me my sewer and water hookup? No, sir, we're not, because that is a rural level of service. And we've talked about the constraints of where we have our utilities. They're in our urban areas, but most people don't understand that, especially with folks that are coming in here today. So, the Open Use provides the transition necessary to facilitate uses found in rural areas with the limited infrastructure, tend to be more agriculture and pastoral in nature. The transition area from rural levels of service, where you have volunteer, fire departments, septic systems, wells, gravel and dirt roads, and a lot of privately maintained roads, with the exception of the DOT maintained roads that you'll find in the rural areas as well, they're just not as much. So, in the urban level service, you see more things like sidewalks, amenities, fire and EMS, faster response times, paved roads, parks, water and sewer systems. So, in this graphic representation, you see your residential districts, which are your R1, R2, R3, residential low density. You have your commercial districts. The commercial are also mixed-use, because they allow residential uses as well. The incorporated areas you can see on there, they're included in gray, and then the Biltmore, just for reference purposes, right there in the center. So, let's look at this graphically. What do the zoning districts look like graphically? This is an easy way to see and understand the table of allowed uses here. So, you see Beaver Dam where you start out. Beaver Dam's the most restrictive. It's residential. That goes all the way back to the, when Beaver Dam was first established. As you move through, you start seeing things become a little more populated, duplexes, housing choices. As you become into your more dense areas, these are the areas that are going to see the urban levels of service. They're going to see the water, the sewer, and as you get into your commercial areas, you'll see more types of uses that are allowed there that are appropriate for those zoning districts themselves. And then, of course, Open Use allows a number of uses, but it's constrained by utilities. It's at the mercy of what can be approved from a well and septic perspective. So, what's going on in planning right now? Well, we're busy. They're busy in permits and inspections. We're just up all across the board. Some of the trend lines you can see, it's hard to believe where we are. We're actually in development boom, as we like to call 2.0. 1.0 was '06. So, we had the Great Recession, and we're back. I would like to point this out, too. If you look at the subdivisions, most of the subdivisions we get that come through on a day-to-day basis, that someone walks in, they're like, hey, I need my plat sign. They're doing small potato stuff. They're doing like one to three lots. These minor subdivisions and these major subdivisions, they require a lot more extra work. They require coordination with water, with sewer, with permits and inspections, environmental health. They require coordination with our fire marshal to make sure that we can get the appropriate apparatus out there, and we can serve these larger-scale developments with appropriate levels of service. Now, the other thing to note, too, is that while you see the numbers up here, what it does not account for are what we like to call zombie projects. So, during development boom, 1.0, you had a number of subdivisions that flipped right off the radar. No one touched them. Developer walked away. We are seeing folks come in and buy those up or finish them out. And that's a good thing, because it puts, it puts the, you know, the properties on the tax roll, and it doesn't leave them just out there with something hanging out there that's either dangerous, half-bill, something that's going to get vandalized. So, we're finishing out projects, too, and that's a good thing. Let's talk a little bit about annexation in former ETJ areas. The Legislature back in 2011 and 2012, they started looking at the powers of towns and cities and incorporated areas to do involuntary annexation. They significantly curbed that ability back in the 2011 and 2012 legislative sessions. So, what that did was it didn't allow cities to just proactively identify what properties met the test for development and then submit those and go ahead and snatch them up. What it said, basically, is that property owners need to come to an incorporated area and basically say, we'd like to be annexed. A lot of times, what we see now is it's really more for alcohol sales. You've got somebody that wants to serve hard liquor. You'll see this a lot around Airport Road, or they're just desire city services, or a tool, a zoning tool that an incorporated area might offer. They might have some specific application that they look for. It's important to note that two of the three abolished ETJs in the state reside in Buncombe County, and that's the City of Asheville 2013 and Weaverville in 2014. Montreat maintains a small area that's an ETJ in the county, and it's more for preservation purposes, and it's to the north of the town itself. Now, with the ETJs, these represent high-growth potential due to the availability of infrastructure, and in the next couple of slides, we're going to look at what those look like before and after. Okay, so, let's look at the City of Asheville. This is the before look when the ETJ was intact. Asheville has a lot more zoning districts than what the county has, and they probably have a lot more now, that they've done some corridor zoning as well. So, this is what it looked like before. This is what it looked like after. And we're going to kind of go back and forth, just so you can see the difference. But basically, what we did is we were in kind of a lurch. So, we had a limited amount of time to assign zoning districts to these former ETJ areas when the state abolished them. So, what we did was with the city, they had RS2. That was their most restrictive zoning district. Those became R1. That's our most, other than Beaver Dam, that's one of our most restrictive districts. R2, R3, those were reserved for the city's RM districts, which are multifamily as well. So, we put a lot of time and thought into matching the city's districts in the former ETJ with ours and try to match them up as best as we could, given the resources we had at the time. Weaverville, smaller ETJ. It's kind of an odd shape. Weaverville sort of hugs 26 and has sort of an offshoot to the east. In the middle, it had the ETJ area. Weaverville only has a few districts. So, what we did, again, they have a couple of things to point out. C1 and C2, those are their two commercial districts. Those are really just, there's a couple splotches here and there, and we tried to match them up as best as we could, the majority of those areas being residential in nature before, after. So, what else, what are the other things that we need to be looking at in our county to paint a better picture of where we are? City, obviously, in the middle. City, obviously, in the middle, Black Mountain, Montreat, to the east, and to the north, we have Woodfin and Weaverville. Where are our constrained areas? Well, one of the most protected areas is a watershed. We follow state rules that basically only allows one home per acre lot size. And that's because of the watershed, you have the Forks of Ivy inlet up here. You have the steep slope areas, you've got Pisgah, you've got the Burnett reservoir. We've got agricultural areas, we have conserve lands, and we also have some floodplain throughout the county. And that's the ironic thing about the mountains. And you're in a valley, and you're in the most developable area, you also have the floodplain, because it follows the flattest course. We also have other protected areas. A lot of our rich, rich, rich agricultural areas are gonna be in Sandy Mush, Lester, and also quite a bit down here in Fairview as well. So, a quick note on watersheds. We have the Broad River over here on this side, in the Ivy area, you've got Ivy, Reams Creek, Sandy Mush, Turkey, Hominy, all feeding into the French Broad. Kane Creek over here, and then of course, to the east, we have the Swanonoa, the tributaries associated with that, the Flack Creek, and, trying to remember, drawing a blank on the other one over there. Somebody knocked the top of their head. Wow. So this is a graphic representation of the floodplains themselves. You can see some of the larger scale ones in Swanonoa, there's the Burnett reservoir, Kane Creek here, French Broad, and some of the tributaries that come off of it. Okay, so some of our conservation and voluntary agricultural districts, this just gives a good graphic representation of what those look like. There's also public trust lands, there's federal, there's state, there's the forest areas, the Blue Ridge Parkway, of course, also bisects the county. We have the voluntary agricultural district, which is voluntary, it allows a 10-year conservation agreement, it's non-binding. We also have a more advanced voluntary agricultural district, but it is binding, it's called the EVAD. It allows a cost-share program with soil and water, and allows things, farmers can get some benefit with fencing that keeps cattle from going to the bathroom and the tributaries themselves. And so it really, really helps with the water quality and protecting our resource in that So, we're Gateway Community, and we all know this. What does that mean for us? Well, it means everyone wants to live here, and we host a good deal of play. So what's the first thing you do when you come to Buncombe County? Well, you're probably landing an Asheville Regional, or you're coming in from one of the larger airports, and you're driving in, and we're a springboard to so many different things. But that's tricky. So just like Charleston, just like the Florida Keys, just like Vail, just like all these other areas, Portland, Oregon, it requires a good deal of tactical planning in order to protect our resources, protect our community, but also balance it out so that it's sustainable. And what we need to do, and what we try to do, is we look at what's good for us. We don't look to adopt rules and regulations, not just because everybody else is doing that, but what's the right fit for our community. Well, sometimes when you do that, you have to balance what we call the seesaw. And it's the hardest thing to do as an elected official, as an employee of the county, as a planning department. It's really tough sometimes to help the development community and the citizenry understand that you need both sides in order to have a sustainable community. So how do you do that? Well, you make the rules too hard, and the development community may balk. You make them too easy, and the residents will complain. This is especially tricky, given the uniqueness of our community, especially with the rural meeting that we're in. And this is also tricky when you have so many different constraints that we have in our community. There's a great article we've included in your packets, it's the black and white one, and it's entitled Exurbia. We won't get into it, but I invite you to look at a couple of the highlighted areas that are in the article. It really speaks to some of the uniqueness that we're running across on a day-to-day basis, and kind of the state of the state of where we are with things. So let's sort of look at where we are. Here's a map that just shows the explosion of permits since 2015. Well, it's not isolated to one area. The one thing we can point out, I can show you a couple of the larger projects, if you like. This is Hawthorne at Weaverville. Here's one we all know. Over here, this is the Asheville-Buncombe Educational Housing, so off New Lester. You can see a concentration of multifamily over in here, we have the Haven and Inca Lake, Graymont Village, Asheville Exchange. Other areas, Dilworth, Long Shoals Apartments. We have the Perry Lane Project, which is an affordable development. And then every other where, you'll see just concentrations of smaller development, duplexes, single-family homes. And the more you see the circles cluster, that indicates, well, in this area, you probably have a subdivision. But we don't just do permits for just the county, we also do permit review for some of the other municipalities that are not large enough to have that capacity.
Do you know the yellow dot out in Lester, is that the mountain housing? That, yeah.
That is the one I did not identify.
That's what it is. I think it's the one across from Engles.
So this is what's called a heat map, and it gives you a really cool way of looking at things and visualizing things. So if we go from here, this gives you a way of saying, where are the areas where it's most dense? Well, remember that cluster we looked at right there? That just gives you a way of looking at it from a thermal perspective. Lot of development in the Weaverville area, Inca Canler, Long Shoals Airport Road, Fairview Road, and the beginnings of where we see development in Swanonoa, and probably in the future, more development along the Lester corridor as well. Major and minor subdivisions. We looked at this graph earlier, this is just a graphic way of looking at things. We can point out a couple of things for you. Parker Cove subdivision, out Inca Canler, I don't have this marked with a red dot, that's Liberty Oaks, which is under construction, you can see it from Smoky Park, Iowa, they actually had to lower and relocate some of the power poles there to get it at a better grade. Preserve at Avery's Creek, Pinnacle at Arabella, and out east, we have the Bee Tree Cliffside. Let's talk real quick, too. We talked earlier about subdivisions themselves. The lots themselves is up to three, that's the lion's share, someone small potatoes, they come into the office, they're just looking for a quick plat sign off. Four to 10 gets you in the minor subdivision category, you're getting slightly more improved roads, you're getting something that's a little more tangible, you'll see some pavement, you might even see gravel if it's at the correct grade. And then the larger scale subdivisions or major subdivisions, that's where you're seeing your paved roads, more appropriate for a development of that size. County-owned properties. The reason we want to show you this is as we move forward to, SECU housing was basically county property. So the county's part of that, for that project, was to donate that piece of property to allow for that development to happen. As we move forward, as we look at affordable housing strategies, it may be important to inventory county properties for collaboration or partnerships in the future that allow, you know, if a land trust is established, if another group is established, this may give us an opportunity. If we're not able to say, give money, maybe it's an opportunity to partner up and look at options for land. So that's why we put that up on there. Look at all the county properties in the city, too. Quite a bit. It happens all the time, foreclosures, I mean, we get quite a bit of property. I think Keith Miller's here, too, from Tax, if we have questions down the road. Okay, the next two maps are heat maps, again. I'm gonna toggle back and forth, because there is a difference between the next two slides. One is 2015, the next one is 2018. The heat map is based on the location of parcels, and heat sensitivity is adjusted by tax value in order to visualize developed lot density. So this is 2015. This is 2018. Now, on the surface, you might not see a lot of change, but let's look at a couple of areas. Let's look at the Brevard Road corridor, Long Shoals, Avery Creek, Weaverville, and the Sweeten Road corridors. So you can sort of see the difference here between those areas as they get warmer, especially in Avery Creek. Watch Weaverville, too. Darkens up, but you're comparing two things in here, too, you're also looking at tax value as well as density. So there have been changes that have occurred in that regard as well. So at this juncture of the presentation, we have our formal panel with us today. We'd like to give them an opportunity to present to you a number of facts, figures. A couple of them have extra supplemental slides they'd like to share with you. And so, if there's no objections, let's move into the panel. Does that sound like a good idea, commissioners? Let's see, should we start PSNC, or should we start the Duke Energy side, or should we flip? Jason, go.
Who? So how do you want us to do this, Ray?
I think you just, you kind of introduce yourself, you tell us what the mission of your organization is, let us know about any cool projects you've got happening, and kind of where you see development and growth in the county with your respective organization.
All over. So, since, I'm Jason Walls, the district manager with Duke Energy, and Jerry Rice and I have gotten to know each other fairly well over the years. So Jerry, can you flip those two light switches off for a second? Now, can you flip them back on? That's the mission of our organization, is to keep the lights on. And so if it's okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I feel like, kind of lighting things up, it seems like a really serious conversation. So I want to tell you a story. So I'm also, I'm notorious for not reading deep into emails or calendar notices, so I didn't hear that I should have sent some slides to Nate earlier. So I brought supplemental, I think they're called supplemental slides, I like to just call them the information I didn't send to Nate before the meeting. And so, everybody look at this bag, if anybody wants one back, I've got a few extra copies, just knock Nate on the head and he'll bring it to you. If it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I would like to kind of tell it as a story, and I'll be fast as possible, okay? So look at the first slide. The first slide is called the Evolution of Energy. If you tear it off, it's a lot more fun if you do it that way, because then it's kind of interactive. And so, a lot of times when I'm doing this presentation in front of a large group, and we can do this if y'all want to, it just depends on how you're feeling, you can make hand binoculars, like this, right? And so, and I like to stand about this point right here, because if you look up until this point, our industry has been relatively linear. We started building power plants, different environmental rules came along, we added environmental controls on power plants, new technologies came about, we diversified how we generate electricity, and we're standing at a really important crossroads in our entire industry. And so when we think about that, we look more at the future like this, as opposed to a straight line. Because there is a whole host of technologies and innovations and things out there that are transforming how we keep the lights on for our customers. From battery storage, to advances in solar energy, to things that we don't even know about. Automated metering infrastructure that allows for greater communication flow with customers. There's just a lot of things going on. So from a global perspective, right, we're in an industry that's in an interesting crossroads, where we're standing with our past behind us, looking ahead at how we're going to get through a relatively uncharted future, which is kind of nice. But, y'all aren't here to hear about Duke Energy globally, you want to hear about our region, right Nate?
That's right.
So tear this piece of paper off, and you look at this one, it looks pretty slick, doesn't it? It's intentional. So look in the middle, there's a number. What is that number? Two, that's a billion, there's a $2 billion. So if you look back, starting at the year 2013, and you project forward to 2028, Duke Energy is in the middle of a $2 billion investment program in the Asheville region, which is primarily Buncombe County. There will be some things that happen on the, kind of, in some of our more rural communities like Madison County, but for, you know, for sake of this conversation, these are generally speaking, these are Buncombe County investments that we're in the middle of. So if you think about that, you have $893 million of a new power plant, we're gonna get to that in just a minute. You have about $60 million of what we know today in solar and in energy storage projects, and I believe that number will grow over time. You have about $168 million of transmission and distribution upgrades, also, which we're gonna talk about in just a minute. You have roughly, you have more than $500 million of just general grid investments that the company is beginning to make, to ensure more reliability for customers, as well as to position us to accept more solar and other forms of distributed energy onto the grid, as well as cybersecurity investments. So if you think about some of the other things, about $422 million to excavate every scoop of coal ash away from the Asheville plant, about $25 million to actually retire the Asheville plant, $14 million in taxes since 2013 to last year. Then you can see some of those other contributions. You know, and under Brownie's leadership and others, as well as other members of this commission, this Asheville City Council, of course, embarking on our journey with the Energy Innovation Task Force. To date, we don't have a number projected, because we're still trying to figure out kind of what that looks like, but to date, the company's invested almost $600,000 in helping to do a lot of the research and analysis of the Energy Innovation Task Force. And additionally, I think I saw Corey here somewhere, you know, over the last four years, we've also invested about $170,000 into direct economic development activities into the region. I say all that, and that there is an enormous amount of work happening in our business in this region. So when you looked at the maps that Nate went through to look at growth, we are seeing that today at a higher rate, and when I say a higher rate, I'm talking about meters we are installing. We are installing meters at a faster rate than we were back in the 2006, 2007 timeframe. And so we are seeing an enormous amount of work. Anecdotally, we like to joke that Asheville is second behind our Charlotte operation centers for the amount of activity that our engineers are actually designing and building is happening here in this region. So we're in a growing market. We expect to grow over 15% over the next decade in energy use, and how we meet those demands are really important. So one of the things not everybody gets to see is the construction of a power plant. It's kind of hard to get back to it, to be honest with you, and there's a lot going on. So, if you take out the net sheet, this is where we take a bit of a virtual tour. Y'all want one, you got one. Some of y'all's works in here. So if you think about, if you think about the Asheville Power Plant, and I'm, is it okay if I stand up? This is a little awkward to sit down. So this is what you see from Long Shoals Road. You're driving up to Bojangles, right? You look out, and you see this beautiful power plant over across this magnificent lake. And you look out, especially at nine, it looks like just this beautiful specimen of a power plant. Well, that's what you see is up here. What you don't see back behind the power plant, hey, hey, y'all, what you don't see back behind the power plant is a lot of stuff, right? At one point, there was roughly 10 million tons of coal ash that was being stored back behind the plant, that's in the process of being excavated. And so you'll see that activity going on right here, the coal ash is being excavated right there. This was the larger of the two coal ash basins that has now been fully excavated, and that's the site and the home of the new combined cycle natural gas power plant. So, our good friends at PSNC, they come in from the south, they come into the plant, and they'll be able to serve all of this. You can see a lot of construction happening. When you're out there, the number of, this is funny, we have more cranes on our power plant right now than they have in the downtown city of Asheville. It's pretty fantastic, like, I counted downtown, I'm like, whoa, we lost a couple cranes recently downtown, so we now have more cranes at our power plant than are flying in downtown Asheville. The number of trucks and people that are employed, we have over 300 people on site now, and that number's gonna grow throughout 2018 and into 2019. now, and that number's gonna grow throughout 2018 and into 2019, and we'll be spending about $900 million on that power plant. Retirement, so the timing of that, that plant will be built by the end of next year, and then we will retire the coal plant at the end of next, well, they're both kind of the end of next year. And then it'll take about two to three years for the, for us to continue to excavate coal ash, to fully retire and demolish the existing coal-fired power plant. And if you look over here where you have coal ash being excavated and where the current coal plant is, that's actually gonna be turned into a utility-scale solar farm at the time when everything's kind of off in the sights. So there's a lot of stuff happening at the power plant. So, and one of the things that I have learned throughout this process, and this is just a separate picture that I wanted to give you, kind of gives you some of the detail around what's going on, a little closer construction maybe. And so one of the things, can't miss this one, there's a little sheet of paper behind the really big sheets of paper that is easy to miss, but real quickly, so in thinking about the environmental benefits of retiring the coal plant and building a natural gas plant, we expect a reduction of about 40, an additional reduction of 45% over what we've already reduced by the $300 million investment in the big tall scrubber that's out there now, which will no longer be needed. 45% reduction in nitrogen oxides, 99% reduction in sulfur oxides, and 60% reduction in carbon dioxide per megawatt hour burn. Now, this is where I'm gonna yell, I know I'm here to talk to the commissioners, but I'm gonna yell back to Josh O'Connor for a minute, because this is about Lake Julian, right? So Lake Julian, when we retire the coal plant, we start the combined cycle plants, we will completely eliminate the thermal impacts to Lake Julian. Right now, the water is warm when it enters the lake, and Lake Julian supports a healthy fishery of tilapia. It's a native species, you know? And the mountains of western, it's not, really. And so at some point in the future, as that starts to work, there will be a time when those fish can no longer sustain life in the lake. Because it will return back to a cooler water lake, and more native species will hopefully return back in their place.
The good news for those of us that enjoy fishing, the bass will eat those tilapia, so.
That's right.
It's gonna be a fish.
That's right. So I set the stage with that because what we are doing, what we're in the middle of doing in Buncombe County primarily, is we're in the middle of a $2 billion investment program here locally to provide cleaner electricity, more reliable electricity, and position this community for future growth in terms of electricity, in terms of electricity. But equally as important as to what we're doing is how we're doing it. So I've been here for five years, and one of the things that I have learned is the importance and value of conversation with those people you're gonna have direct impacts with. So if you look at this piece of paper, right, it's the one with the big red line through the middle arrow. I'm gonna give you two examples. So one of the things that we did over the last two years is in working with the city of Asheville's River Arts District Transportation Improvement Project, holy, it's so hard for me to say, RadTIP, y'all know what that is. So we had to move all of our big transmission towers. And so to do that, that was phase one, and now we're in the process of moving it from the corner of Trade and Robert Street, White Duck Taco, for those of you who know where that is in the River Arts District, going up the MSD line into downtown and behind the US Cellular Center. We're gonna be having direct and explicit impact on customers' lives, right? We're gonna be working behind their houses, we needed to remove some trees, we needed to do a lot of stuff. And so in the spirit of, we want to listen and learn before we just act, we spent a lot of time in that neighborhood, understanding and listening, so that when we started work, we would have people that supported what we would do as opposed to not supporting, kind of the slide that you put on there, the balance. We've learned the value and importance of listening, and that's been a really big deal. So that project is underway right now, and it's going exceedingly well, knock on wood. Now, last update, because I can see I'm losing you, this one's fun. Who here has heard that we are in the process of building an electrical substation in downtown Asheville that hasn't been built since the mid-'60s because we really need it to support the reliability of downtown Asheville? Who's heard? Raise your hands. Be proud. Be proud, people, we've all heard about it. Not been shoved to the ground over this thing, it's a big deal. So going back to the principle of the importance of listening, right? So we purchased four parcels of property where we would buy the property and go into the community to explain what it is we were doing. And that was met with significant resistance. And so we decided to try a different approach. We worked with the neighborhood, the We Can Neighborhood, and kind of, well, the old Volvo, the old Volvo dealership right on the corner of Patton Avenue. And so we worked with that neighborhood and some other leaders to talk about, to kind of set the stage on the problem we were trying to solve. So instead of bringing the solution to the community, we brought the problem to the community and allowed them, gave them the opportunity to help us solve it. And so the next three sheets of paper, I need you to write draft on them because they're all draft, and none of them are final, and I don't want anybody to think they are, Jerry Rice, it's because they're not final. This is part of a conversation with the community. So when we started to design that substation, this is what we started with, okay? This is the Volvo dealership. You can see the substation takes up the entire thing, right? All roughly five acres of property. So as we started listening to the folks in the We Can Neighborhood and other leaders in Asheville, they started sharing with us not what they wanted us to do, but why we should care about building in their neighborhood. And so that, oh, wait a minute, where's the second? Oh, well, so there was another one. So that turned into a design that was more up in this area, and we started listening a little bit more, and we found out that this corner up here, the corner of Patton Avenue and Klingman, was exceedingly important to the We Can Neighborhood feeling connected to Asheville. And by building a substation on there would really disrupt the various plans that had been laid out for Asheville. So I'm hurrying, I promise, but this is just so good. So this isn't finished. This is not a finalized plan, I want to be very clear, because we are just now in the process of re-engaging that working group downtown to finalize our plans for this substation. But the thing that I've learned through all this, whether it's a foothills line, transmission line that goes all the way down 45 miles into the upstate of South Carolina, or a coal plant and retirement to a gas plant, transmission lines being built downtown, or substations being built in a community, that those conversations and listening is exceedingly important in Asheville and in Buncombe County. And so I'm delighted that we have been able to set a new standard for community engagement around joint problem-solving with communities, and I'm hopeful that as we continue these conversations, we will turn this into a final plan that we can submit to the city of Asheville and others for their consideration and approval with advocates as opposed to adversaries. That's all I got.
Good job. All right, and we can keep going, and then we'll have, I mean, people have questions and stuff, feel free to chime in, it'd be conversational. All right, Chad, you next?
Yeah, all right. So Chad Pierce, the City of Asheville Water Department. And I'll just go over a little bit of what we have going on in terms of projects and our capital expenditures. Our current five-year capital expenditure plan has us expending roughly $11 million a year on new water line and plant improvements, improvements to our infrastructure. That number was slightly elevated in the '17, '18 budget cycle, and was actually $50 million. And a lot of that is representative of a major project we have ongoing at our water treatment plant at Northport. And so what we had there was new regulations as far as what our spillway had to be able to handle during the maximum possible storm event. So the Dam Safety Act regulations required us to make some major upgrades to that spillway. And so what we're doing is we're actually adding some elevation to the dam, and that's being done by a curtain dam or a partition dam, where they go on top of the existing earthen structure and basically add four-foot of partition there to give us some extra storage volume. Complete reworking of the spillway is being moved. The old existing spillway is gonna remain as an auxiliary spillway. Some of you might remember the old hunting cabin or rod and gun club that was on the property. So that's no longer there, unfortunately, that was demolished as part of this. They took out, it was elevated on a hill, and they took out a lot of that material, removed it to bring it down in front of the existing dam, to reinforce it, to help support the new elevation. And the spillway, a new spillway is being added and designed, it's much wider and larger, so it's got a more, larger capacity there. And they're going to use, so the old traditional spillway gates that were operated as recently as 2004 with a wheel and a chain, they had to send somebody out there to turn it, to raise the gates. And during the hurricane events of 2004, we discovered that was a bad idea, as the poor operator was, you know, out in the pouring storm, trying to raise the gates to save the dam. So they did convert that over to a motor-controlled device. But now, we're going to what is called a fuse gate. And it's a really interesting concept. There's no thought that goes into it as far as operation. There's nothing that you raise or lower, it's base to fail. So what happens is when the water elevations get so high into the reservoir, those gates, they start to fail to release water down the spillway, and the whole thing is designed basically to keep the dam from being overtop and to save the dam. But it takes out, you know, it's designed up front, it takes out any type of human decision or possible error at the time of an event. So that was a major expenditure, it's ongoing. The bulk of the construction started last December, 2017. You guys might have heard some information or seen the notices about us doing blasting because the bulk of the project is just earthwork. So it's moving a mountain down to where the dam used to be. So there's a lot of blasting that goes on there. A lot of that's been coordinated and communicated to the Black Mountain, Town of Black Mountain. Their folks and their residents are the ones that are dealing with the majority of that impact. Currently, I'm managing four major water line distribution projects. Each one of those represents about $5 million, so that's about a total of $20 million of water line replacements. And then throughout the next four years, the bulk of our CIP budget is geared toward those type of distribution system projects. So like I said, roughly $11 million a year, with some money going toward other plant improvements, just keeping them upgraded. One thing that's important to know about our capital improvement plan is we do not extend new lines. So all this money that we're spending is just upkeep for our existing infrastructure. We go through a process on a yearly basis, and we use a lot of maps like Nate had in his presentation, heat maps and different things to identify our problem areas. Some key factors that we utilize to determine where our water lines need to be replaced. So anytime there's a break and our maintenance crews go out to fix a break, it's recorded through our workflow system, there's cost and things that are put into that, so they try to record, oh, how many man-hours, what was our total cost to fix this break? And all of that is captured. We also look at places where we've had to deny water availability. So like Nate mentioned in his presentation, the first step for a new development, whether it be a single-family home or a new 200-home subdivision or new commercial development, is that water availability. So as we go through those and we look at our lines, we see if they can support new development. If they can't, unfortunately, those water availabilities get denied. And we capture that information on where those occur and the frequency of those. And then every year, we take that data and some other data that we have, the age of our infrastructure, so we kind of are anticipating where those breaks are gonna start showing up, how old the pops are. We also have a lot of older neighborhoods within the city limits, within the county, where the water lines were originally undersized. It might have started off with some two-inch water lines within the neighborhood. They can't support fire flows and things of that nature. Got a lot of neighborhoods with four-inch water lines, and it's a lot better than two, but it still has, we still have a hard time of providing fire flow and things like that with those lines. Now, minimum standard for a water line extension is a six-inch water main. So you have to have at least a six-inch water main to support fire hydrant, to provide fire protection and things. So that's one of our other priorities, is to look at that smaller size infrastructure. We know where all of our two-inch stuff is, four-inch stuff, and try to attack that, too. So basically, we boil that down every year and bring in that data and look to see where our greatest needs are, where our most problematic water lines are, where those water lines that can't provide, we can't have additional connections to those, and those are the ones that we improve. We're blind to jurisdictional boundaries. We don't care if those water lines, we serve the county, we serve the city, we serve parts of northern Henderson County. So we don't care about where the political boundaries are, we look at where the need is to improve water infrastructure. Because our mission statement is to provide safe drinking water to all of our citizens and to do that in the most reliable and sustainable method possible. So we want to make sure that things that are getting built, and as we build these new lines, we're not just doing it, we're doing it in a manner where it's gonna eliminate possibility of breaks in the future, and our cost for continuing maintenance of those lines is as cost as the least possible. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Sorry I didn't have supplemental slides, I kind of, I kind of was thrown into this last second. They're having an important budget meeting over at the city today, so I was asked to fill in. But in a nutshell, that's kind of our capital projection, so what we have going on. Nate hit on some of the hot spots. We definitely were pre-recession numbers now as far as the number of water availabilities and permit requests and stuff that were seeing come in. We're seeing a substantial amount of growth in South Asheville along the Brevard Corridor that's ripe with new large-scale apartment complexes. It seems like that's where the bulk of those are going. We're seeing a few of those scattered north, I think New Bridge, there was a pretty large one that went in. And a lot of these zombie projects we're seeing now be realized. We have a lot of conversations with developers. We're seeing some of our common players, the folks with Biltmore Lake, the Cliffs Developments, they hadn't really been doing a lot of new development inside of their, you know, their areas, the Ramble, Biltmore Lake, Cliffs at Walnut Cove, South Cliff for a while, but those are now starting to definitely ramp back up. One of the big differences that we're seeing is where they used to come in and come in and have a 100-lot subdivision proposed as one phase, there's a, coming in much smaller. So now they're coming in 20 lots at a time, 30 lots at a time, and a little bit smaller footprints, lot sizes, I think, and Nate probably can speak a lot more to this, but it seems like the lot sizes have decreased from what they, what they used to be. But we are definitely seeing some ramp up of those. We're currently underway with a master plan. The last one we did started in 2004. It was officially completed in 2007, but the most of that information and data had been collected prior to the recession, and a lot of that involves projections for population growth and some other things. So of course, with the recession, that wasn't realized. They had us slated for the need for a new water treatment plant in 2025, and that's obviously not, not gonna happen now. But, you know, we're curious, it's pretty interesting to see what the results of this newest master plan is gonna be, if the growth speculations are the same. At the 2005, there were a lot of anticipated growth in the Kane Creek area. You know, it's a nice valley, lots of open farmland, it's kind of rock for development. And so it's interesting to see if that trend continues, if they're projecting that that's gonna be one of the areas, the next areas of a large amount of growth here. And also, when they think we're gonna run out of water supply, we're gonna need some additional water supply, so.
But the water supply is currently quite robust, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
There's not, there's not any.
Our daily, daily demand is right around 18 to 20 million gallons a day, depending what season we're in. And our safe-yield capacity with our three plants is near 40 million gallons a day. So we're about 50%.
Right. So any of the developments that don't get approved due to water limitations So, so any of the developments that don't get approved due to water limitations, it's not the supply, it's the, it's the pipe delivery infrastructure that's looking for you.
Yeah, it's not, not necessarily how much we have to supply, but it's what infrastructure is available to get it right there adjacent to that. And a lot of times that's limited by our size of our infrastructure. So, you know, somebody might want to try to build a large commercial development and there's only a six inch water line there that can only supply so much, so many gallons that require pressure. So they have to look at upsizing that infrastructure to a point back maybe where there's larger transmission mains to be able to supply, to supply those.
All right, let's keep going. All right, Cole, Troy.
Well, I guess DOT, our mission is to provide a infrastructure that can serve all loads of traffic safely and efficiently. As you know, as you drive around Asheville, I'm sure you, you can tell that all our infrastructure is not up to the level of service that we'd all like it to be. But we do have a lot of projects underway. We, we have a surplus of money and the Secretary and the Governor and all has directed us to accelerate these projects as much as we can. And so we have done so. In that measure to try to address that, they've also pushed a lot of these projects out to the division offices to manage the planning and design of the projects and to do that coordination with the counties and municipalities. So that's basically, that's what I've been handling and overseeing is the managing of those projects through the design process. And we have quite a few projects here in Buncombe County. I mean, the major projects that we're looking at, as you know, is the I-26 connector projects. There's a B, A being a C, B being right around Patton Avenue, and C is the large intersection of twenty-six and forty. And both of those projects have been funded, so we're moving forward with those. Trying to finish up the planning phase and get our, our documents together. The section in the middle, West Asheville, has not been funded yet. It is in our spot process to be scored this time. If we can get, you know, everyone to support it and put points on it, hopefully we can get it funded and also construct that center section along with the B and C section. It did not score well enough in our statewide scoring system to be funded through the statewide system. There are three tiers, statewide, the, the regional and the division. So we're going to pick it up somewhere, either in the regional or division to get it scored high enough and get it funded. Along with that, more I-26, there's some projects, A-10 up to the north to widen the future I-26. There are also projects coming up very soon on the south side of Asheville on I-26 widening from the intersection, the interchange with I-40 all the way down into Henderson County on the other side of Upwood Road. So Buncombe County is broken down into three sections, but we're going to let Buncombe County as one contract. It's supposed to be let out to construction in two thousand and nineteen, that widening in Buncombe County. Other major projects we've got, we're working on is I-47, 59 Liberty Road interchange. That's going to probably open up an area of growth once that interchange is built. Also over in Black Mountain at Blue Ridge, we're proposing a new interchange at that site, which is going to help the commercial industry get access to the interstate and take some of that traffic out of Black Mountain and potentially open up some more growth. Other arteries around Asheville and Buncombe County that's going to, that's in the process is we've got a project going to widen Sweet Creek Road from NC-280 to Rock Hill, where it's already widened. Part of that's, you know, in the city and the county. NC-191, Brevard Road from the Arboretum, all that entire corridor into Henderson County. But the section from the Arboretum to just south of Long Shoals has been funded and we're working on widening that corridor in the planning phase now.
What's your timeline on that?
On 191, we're looking to let it to construction in two thousand and twenty-three.
And Sweet Creek?
Sweet Creek is two thousand and twenty-two. So, you know, a lot of these interstate projects, the widening is going to be let in two thousand and nineteen. The B and C of the connector sections are going to be let in two thousand and twenty right now. So the next few years, there's going to be a lot of construction going on.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah, yeah. So, and there are a lot of other Buncombe County projects. Let's see, let's look at the more local. Big ones is Sardis Road, a wide Sardis Road from 191.
What's the date on that? What's the current date on that?
Uh, let's see if I can find that. There's not many roads around here that we're not, that we're not working on. I think it's U-647. Swan and Noah's in here. Looks like construction right now, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay.
Let's see, other major arteries, Swan and Noah River Road, we're looking to, look at Swan and, Swan and Noah River Road from Biltmore Avenue all the way through until it ties into Tunnel Road. Those are two separate projects. That's the main arteries. I mean, if there's anything in particular that someone had questions about, but yeah, there's a lot, a lot of planning going on and I think you'll see that that'll continue. I think our spot, completing our spot process, our scoring for our projects for this time at the end of this year. So there will be additional projects coming up in that. But if there's anything in particular interest anyone has, we can answer those too.
I don't know, we get those questions all the time about, you know, when are the roads are going to be, you know, started, you know, completed. We get a lot of emails about, about roads. And I'm, I'm trying to think how we could tie that information to the website or something to where we could actually answer these questions for folks. Because, you know, if it's, I mean, Sweet Creek, Sardis Road, you know, 191, you know, for me, District Three, I mean, I, I get just hammered all the time. Emails, which is fine, I mean, it's part of the job, but then it'd be good to be able to have an approximate idea of when these things are going to be done, that you could actually send people to, but it doesn't matter if you're at Ingalls or if you're getting an email, because those are really, these are really big, important projects.
And, and all of these projects are shown on our website, the State Transportation Improvement Program, so they can look it up online.
It's pretty easy to navigate.
Yeah, yeah, it's not hard. But there too, we're available, you know, you can call me or our division office and we've got people that can assist with that. There are also a lot of these larger projects, interstate projects, there are individual websites for each of those, the larger projects.
Just don't, I bet we could figure out a way to connect any of the people when they come in here to connect them to specific, you know, specific spots. I mean, we're looking at the website right now.
If you Google live STIP, we update that every month. So if there's any changes made to the TIP program, those are updated every month on there. So when you pull that out, if the let date of the project gets accelerated, then it reflects those changes monthly.
Because of growth is, you know, probably outside of some of the, you know, opioid issues and the other issues, you know, we're working on when you're out, you know, in the public, growth is probably one, probably the biggest thing that's grown to me really. What are we going to do? How, how, you know?
How are we going to handle it?
Yeah, they, you know, they want you to have the answers, which we don't have all of them, but we, if we don't, we want to be able to form to the right direction in an easy, in an easy way.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Sounds great.
Yeah, it's a pretty cool site.
And there too, like I said, some of the larger ones, they have their own little website, like the I-26 Connector. You can just type in I-26 Connector on Google and it'll pull those projects up.
I think the planning department can be a good conduit for sort of, you know, I sent around one and it was a really good graphic representation because, you know, we, everybody sees y'all's codes and they're like, oh, the U-2596er, okay. So, but I tell you what was, what was really helpful is when y'all sent out, like, and I'd sent it to the commissioners and senior leadership team. It was a graphic representation that gave that segment and it showed it along, and that might've been through Land of Sky too, where it showed this segment is the one that's going to be widened on 26. If we could have like a portal, work with you guys on something that, you know, if we can provide a direct link and someone was just to wander around planning, because we get called about the craziest things, but that might be something we could reformulate once we do a website upgrade. Do you guys think that'd be something that we should look into, be more happy to help out there?
Yeah, we just need to be able to quickly answer those questions for the public, you know, and if we, whether we forward it, you know, as a commissioner, we forward it to, to the planning department or wherever, and then they answer them back, you know, copying us so that they know that, you know, we've actually responded. We get a lot, I mean, we just get a lot. They need to know, I mean, they know that, even though that date's going to change, it always changes, you know, but they need to know that at least those things are actually being worked on.
And, you know, if we can help, help you find those websites, we have a division planning engineer, his name is Brendan Merrithew. I can get him to assist you.
Okay.
And the planning branch is also hiring another engineer.
All right.
Prior divisions.
We're hiring work.
For there. We, we haven't quite filled that position, but it's not far away. So we'll have a couple of people here that can assist you, you know, if you need some help with that, finding those locations and websites and get something set up.
Can I connect him with Land of Sky?
If you get any questions concerning DOT and you don't know where to send them, please send them to my office, the district office. We will gladly chase, chase down anything and assist you guys with information any way possible. So please don't hesitate to call me or email me or call my office. We'll be glad to get you, assist you in any way we can and get that information for you.
I'll say this since y'all are in the room, since I've been a commissioner, which is about six years, one hundred percent of the time that I've called the DOT with a community issue, y'all have responded it and in almost all cases fixed it very quickly, whether it was a, you know, bad, bad place in the road or there was a bad culvert out in Cantor, just different things that's, you know, and so I really appreciate that.
All right, guys. Hey, before we move on to Erica, so there's a question about whether we're going to take a break. Here's what I'd like to suggest, because we've got a lot of ground to cover. Why don't we just kind of keep going, but if folks need to, and if some folks have stepped out, if you need to take a restroom break or something, let's just do that as you need to, so we can kind of keep, keep everything moving, okay? All right, great. Erica.
Coffee.
Thanks for having us. I have a few slides that are in the handout that Nate passed out, but it's basically just information also, talk about some of our programming. We have, overall our mission is to, to provide assistance across multiple jurisdictions. We have twenty-one jurisdictions we work with. It's predominantly it's four counties and all the municipalities within those. We also work with Haywick County and those municipalities for the transportation planning that we do in specific other projects. So predominantly our three programs are the AAA, so the Area Agency on Aging, the Workforce Development Board, and Economic Community Development. So there are three departments. And one of our purviews is we are the economic development district through the Economic Development Administration. That's the US Department of Commerce. And we're also with Appalachian Regional Commission, we're the lead development district for the region, which basically means we're a partner and we provide direct kind of assistance to all of our local governments within our region. So that's one of the major responsibilities with that is, is doing the comprehensive economic development strategy. And that's a regional look at what are the priorities, what are the trends, what do we see coming down the road? And right now those priorities are broadband, portable housing, workforce solutions, so workforce training programs, and transportation and other types of infrastructure, so water, sewer, we're seeing, everyone's talking aging systems and a lot of growth and needing to address those. So I'll talk about one of the, the projects right now is the high-speed broadband access with West Engine. And this is a, a project that started, I think, a couple of years ago. And it started by the hub in Asheville, working with NC State University and Mark Voight and the, the Next Generation Networks Project in the Raleigh area, hearing what they're doing, trying to attract high-speed broadband to that area. So the next step was a small group was pulled together and that's Phil Sederberg and the folks here in the room. Phil Sederberg is our chair of the program. He's our super volunteer and Stan Newman, who's also a super volunteer, used to work for the FCC. So we have some technical experts, Hunter Gussman with ARC is part of the group, the Asheville-Buncombe Chamber of Commerce and UNCA and Otis Brown here with NC State University as well. So that kind of steering committee sparked six municipalities to band together, put the money in a pot and hire consultants. We were asked to coordinate and facilitate that process. And the municipalities are Asheville, Biltmore Forest, Buncombe County, and Wakeville, Hendersonville, Fletcher and Laurel Park. And they follow kind of the broadband lines, the trunk lines that are coming through as well as the major interstates. So to start with those, we put together an RFN, as it is, a Request for Negotiations, which is a new one for me. And to basically put it out there and, and we've had, we had some good responses. We had six respondents of broadband providers, some are already in the area here, Mike Charter, AT&T, and some are new. So we're currently in negotiations with two new ones that would be new to the area. And at the, what do they need, what do our municipalities need, and trying to find that, that middle ground. Some of the major takeaways through this process that we found is we need to, to really help that private partner, private-public partnership take root. North Carolina doesn't allow counties or municipalities to operate broadband infrastructure. So we have to find creative ways to, to have broadband in our more rural, less densely populated areas where the return on investment's not there for companies. And so taking what we've learned now, we, we have a small grant from ARC, the Appalachian Regional Commission, to take West Engine to the next phase, which is to start working with all the communities within the four county region and the counties themselves to start looking at what the priorities are, where we need. cells, to start looking at what the priorities are, where we need targeted service for broadband, and start looking at what those, those hubs are, those priorities, and what we can do to address if we need to seek funding, if we need to work directly with some of the providers to see how we can make those connections happen. And some of the reasons we're looking at broadband is we're hearing from our chambers of commerce or economic developers about the need for those, it's a new term to me, but the tech nomads, people who can work out of their homes, they want to bring their work here for the quality of life, but there's no broadband. So they need higher speed access, reliant, lower-cost service that they can't find in a lot of these communities they want to move to. It's also a tool for our smaller communities. They want to have a more robust Main Street or downtown, like Black Mountain and Weaverville and these places that, in order to build up those areas, they need a strong broadband system. So it's kind of the critical infrastructure of this, of the future, the broadband there. And telehealth is also an emerging issue for our more rural areas where the services might be pulling back, but smaller institutions are coming in, or doctors' offices, and wanting to be able to provide those services directly. And then there's the digital divide for kind of our communities that lack the service. There's a real trend in trying to pay attention to children in education systems, as well as adults who are pursuing certifications or continuing education. You hear a lot of stories about people having to drive in and park at McDonald's so they can do their homework. So those types of things we're trying to address so that people don't have to do that. So this effort's, I see it being a longer term, but we have made some great progress in trying to get, have more very clear communications and kind of hard conversations about what does need to be put on the table to bring providers here. So those are overall the broadband project in a very small nutshell. And switching gears a little bit to touch base on, Nate asked me to touch base on transportation a little bit as well, is we host the, within Land of Sky, Economic Community Development Department, is the MPO and the RPO, so the Metropolitan Planning Organization and the Rural Planning Organizations. And basically, that's our regional transportation planning. It's a, we've partnered very closely with the DOT and many of the folks in the room here are, are involved in all levels of it. So Chair Newman is on our RPO board, as well as our MPO board, and Commissioner Beech Ferrera is on that as well, and Commissioner Presley is our alternate. And then Matt Cable and Josh, our Josh O'Connor is our chair of the staff level, the technical committee. And Matt Cable sits on both the MPO and the RPO Technical Coordinating Committee. So it's a, it's a large team effort of partnerships and our program, a lot of funding for the transportation projects in the region. And right now, we have 608 million in program, projects programmed in the next four years, so FY 18 and '21. And that includes bicycle, pedestrian, roadways, greenways, public transportation, all encompassing. The main responsibility of the MPO is to put together the Metropolitan Planning, or the Transit, they changed the name, Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And basically, that's a 20-year plan for the region for transportation. And we're in the process now of starting the modeling and looking at all the impacts for the next iteration. It's kind of an ongoing, ongoing process. And the MPO has specific responsibilities under, with Federal Transit Administration as well as federal highways, to do call for projects for specific pots of money related to public transportation and, and other transportation networks, the bicycle pedestrian transportation. So it's, it's kind of a, a mix of things that the MPO and RPO are responsible for. And there's a, I'm sure, I'm sure you all have gotten a notice, the 4400, the I-26 corridor from Henderson to I-40, that public meeting is next Monday at the Biltmore Baptist Church. I wanted to remind you all of that. I think that's all I have. Oh, I'm sorry. The public transportation side of life, we do administer the mobility side of, not the operations side, but we partner with Bunkham County to do that. And I think we have since 2011, 2012. And work directly with Matt in, in administering that program. It's mainly the billing, validation of trips, kind of ma, maintaining and managing the different grant streams. And then we also, for DHHS for the county, we administer the, the nonemergency Medicaid transportation program. Yes, I'm sorry.
This is going back a few minutes. I just wanted to make sure I understood. You said that under state law, counties and municipalities can't operate broadband, but it sounds like they can participate in public-private partnerships. Is that?
I'm going to look at Hunter for this, but I think, as I understand the law, they cannot, they cannot operate it, but they can put money into infrastructure as long as some, another entity operates.
Specifically, cities can't. It's very gray as for counties, but participating in a public-private partnership are definitely things that are available to vote.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Great, thank you, Erica.
So are you driving Nate? Now, if you want to just look at me when you're opening.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for inviting us and actually thank you for your service in general, but thank you for your service to MSD. We have many board members that are current, Alan Cross, Valcher, Brownie, served a short time with us, and Robert Presley currently. And Jim, I look forward to working with Jim, he's a new board member and look forward to being a colleague and working with you. Wanted to do, inform you a little bit about our approach towards the development by way of history. I think it's necessary. I guess our mission pretty much is, is the first statement there. We were formed back in '62 by state statute as a special district to collect and treat wastewater and eliminate the discharges to the surrounding rivers. Prior to that, at that time, really, all the lines, the stormwater lines and the sanitary sewers were all tied together and ran to the river. And there were a bunch of outfalls along the river, and that's the way it was done, because the solution to pollution was dilution. So you just run it all over the river. And, you know, for sparsely populated areas, the river has an assimilable capacity and can ecologically take care of that. But as you get denser environments, you have to add technology to really speed up the biological process. So that's generally where we're coming from. And between '62 and '89, we built 100 miles worth of the trunk sewers and the treatment plant. At that time, it was a 25 million gallon a day plant and began treating in '68. We upgraded that plant to a 40 million gallon per day treatment plant in the mid-1990s. Also, in the 1990s, what we call sewer consolidation, the many local governments and districts gave us their collection lines to take care of. MSD at that time assumed another 720 miles of the smaller feeder lines, which were in really poor condition, broken down clay and even cardboard pipe were part of the benefits there. Next slide. These were the districts that all came together. So you have municipalities to the left, at Woodfin in the last few years, but to the right, you have nine special districts and then Woodfin at the bottom. The nine above are what the county board members, the three are representatives on board or represent. Those are the districts that came into MSD at the time. So that's out in the canyon. And that's how we come with the 12 member board. Most of the folks on the left-hand side have representation, and the county has three representatives to, to handle those. Next slide. This is a picture of the district. As Nate was showing, it's a cross, looks more, ours looks more like an amoeba. The French Broad pretty much flows south, north through there. Up, up near the top, you'll see a big yellow box. That's the, well, not, not in this picture, but the yellow box up there near the top is our treatment plant up in Woodfin. And so most of the district can get by gravity to the plant theoretically. There are many pump stations, about 30 pump stations for various insubstantial areas that need pumping, particularly Weaverville, Weaverville to the north has to pump back down to the plant. Next slide. Collection System Overview. 180 square mile service area, just in general, that's a much larger, we're a very spread out area in Bunkham County as compared to, say, Charlotte or Winston-Sale and Greensboro, as far as the amount of people in the particular area. And so because of, in the 1920s, they thought this was going to be the Charlotte, you know, and so they ran lines pretty much everywhere. And since taking over the collection lines in 1990, we've spent about 324 million replacing about a million feet of sewer mains, which is about 25% of the system. One thing I have to, have to plug here is, is our operations staff, we created a first response team. We tracked our, our response times in 2016, and this is very typical of all years. It takes 31 minutes for a person to be out of your door if you have a sewer problem of any source, which is pretty important. There's, there's not only environmental portion of that, there's also the public health handling. People are in trouble and have vacuumed up sewer, you want somebody there in 30 minutes. So we try to keep that up. Next slide there. Capital Improvement Program. We have a Capital Improvement Program Committee that was put together at consolidation when all the entities came together. And at first, when everybody was giving us their smaller lines, they brought, brought their requests to MSD and say, you know, this is what we envisioned and these are where our problems are. As time goes on, and we've had them for 25, 30 years, we pretty much are operating, we know where all the problems are. But we still bring the entities in to give it the smell test and get the support from the community and make sure that we're addressing all those types of needs. And so that, we bring that together once a year and they vote on the capital budget for the next year and look at approve our 10-year CIP as well. We spent a lot of money there. We tried to replace about 50,000 feet a year of sewer mains, about 1% of the system. That's where we're spending a lot of money. Next slide. This is how we've rated so far in terms of SSOs and the rehab program has really significantly lowered the amount of SSOs. We had a lot of, and SSOs are sanitary sewer overflow's backups that go into streams and that, that type of thing. The red portion on there, the French Broad was recently reclassified from Class C to Class B recreation, just downstream of our, of our discharge from the plant. But a lot of this has to do with the amount of money that we're respending in the rehab program for sewer lines. Future growth potential, much like the water, we're, our plant rating is at 40 million gallons a day. That's what our permitted capacity is, but we're currently running at about 20, which is not half of that. However, the plant was built in the 60s, rebuilt in the 80s, and we're rebuilding now. We're basically doing open-heart surgery on our plant right now and will be for the next six, eight years. We don't have the luxury that Jason has with a lot of room. We're between a cliff and a river. We've got to keep the plant running and treating. At the same time, we replace process by process with new technology. So that's where we're in the midst of now. We're spending about 100 million going over the next 10 years for that, that plant rehab, in addition to keep rehabbing all these sewer lines. I'm going to talk about our master plan, how that divides the growth, provides for growth, but when we rehab lines, we rehab them for a size for future development, so that it will take care of a larger basin whenever we rehab a line. And we do have a master plan, which I'll talk about in a second. This is where we're spending the money over the next 10 years. Used to be, at first, it was on interceptors, then it was on collection, and now it's a healthy portion of all three that we're doing now. But as you can see, I just wanted to put that number up there. That's 308 million. I was talking about the 324. In 25 years, we're doing this in 10 years. So that just goes to show you, you know, the type of reinvestment that we're doing now because of a nexus of our plant getting older and having to rehab it and the growth that's going to happen. So we're designing everything for the beyond the 50 year ride. So that's important. Okay, Collection System Master Plan. This was for the lines. The collection system are the lines, and that's usually where you hit the development. They really don't care about the plant, although we do in general, we have to take care of it. But the lines are, are sort of where the rubber hits the road. So back in 2008, we had a Collection System Master Plan performed, and it incorporated the new Bunkham County Land Use Plan and zoning ordinance, and incorporated all the other member agencies, all the other towns, city of Asheville and all the other smaller towns, their planning and zoning efforts as well. Basically, it provided further orderly growth of the sewer system. And one important point there at the bottom is that we currently have, we don't construct speculative lines. We don't pay for expansion. We partner with developers, but we're, we're not going to go out and, and run a line out into Wildview, La, La Yonder speculatively and see, you know, build it and they will come type of thing. We're not going to pick winners and moves. So, but we will partner with developers if they do come in. Next slide. Just to kind of give you a visual, this is our GIS snapshots. That's our GIS showing our existing lines. This is just one area out west, for example. These are existing lines in green. And then the next slide there, those are the additional lines that our master plan identified where we would expand and how we would expand. Why do we go through this exercise way ahead of time? Well, when a developer comes in, we'd want to be able to tell them, okay, well, this is what, this is the line you're going to have to run and this is the size it's going to take. And why are they in those spots? Well, gravity. You want to make the system look like gravity, so you don't minimize the amount of pump stations. Pump stations are going to happen, but you want to minimize them. And so that's why they're flowing along all the tributaries there. And so that, when developer comes in, after they've gotten approval from Bunkham County, they come to us and say, well, what's necessary? And we show them this. And then, then they start taking a look at the cost and that type of thing, and they start working that into their pro forma. Next slide. So that's where we do partner with developers when they come in. We will, for the larger lines, the larger interceptor trunk lines, we will provide design services, right-of-way services, and financial contributions. So if a developer was going to run a line to their development and they only need an eight inch and a 16 inch was required for the entire basin, we'll pay the differential cost for the eight inch to the 16 inch and we'll require them to do it right. And then when another developer comes on, we'll charge them a pro rata rate of what the original developer had put into it, just to try to facilitate that. Back before the recession, there were a lot of people. Back before the recession, there were a lot of people, or at the recession, a lot of people were just waiting for another guy to run the line and they tie on and that type of thing and take advantage of somebody else's capital outlay. So we do provide that service to prorata share those. We do have an economic development fee waiver for industries employing over 200 people or an existing industry expanding by 200 people or discharging a million gallons a month. We'll waive their tie-on fee. And finally, not least, the affordable housing rebates. We rebate 70% of the tie-on fees for affordable housing developments. These are three projects that were recent, Reeves Creek Interceptor, and they're identified growth out there, the West French Broad Interceptor, which is that workforce housing off of Long Shoals Road. We had to run an interceptor down to that. And Olivet, which is just north of Woodfin. These are three developments that have been done recently. Again, we are participating in those. And Nate asked me to put in an ugly slide with like a fat bird that happened in London and their big tunnels. We don't have, our largest slide is 66-inch, so I couldn't show you a fat bird, but this is grease coming out of a healthcare facility that has food preparation. All this to say is grease is bad to put down the systems. My public service announcement. Please, if you're cooking with grease, you're done, pour it in a can, stick it under the sink, let it cool off, and then send it to Jim at the solid waste department. So you don't clog up the sewers because the sewers are just like our arteries. They'll clog up just as easily. Final one is our website. If, I encourage people to come down and have a tour of the plant because it's very interesting and particularly when we have it all wide open. But there's a virtual tour on our website too of the plant if you don't want to smell it.
I have to make a plug for MSD. I'm on a lot of boards, but the efficiency, the capability, and probably for taxpayers, the customer service is extraordinary, really, really extraordinary. And, you know, from people having illegal, for lack of a better word, sewerage at their own house, how they deal with everybody is amazing and equanimity is really to be followed and emulated.
Thanks, Tom.
Great. Great, Lee.
All right. Here we are.
You guys are next.
Thank you for the invitation to be here. I'm going to give you a little history and then we'll let Mike present our two slides, just two. We started providing natural gas to this area in 1954. We've seen tremendous growth, obviously, since that time. About three years ago, we looked at our infrastructure and the pipes that we had coming up the mountain and connecting to Transcontinental Pipeline in Mill Springs. And we realized that in order to be able to grow at the rates we've been growing, we would need to do some things to upgrade that infrastructure in order to serve this area for the next 20, 25 years at least. So we embarked on some major pipeline construction projects. So Mike, I'm going to let Mike Lewis, our original engineer, kind of present this as to what these look like. You're going to have to look that way, I think.
I hope it's okay to stand. I'll have to stand. Thanks for that great slide.
Mike, do you want to bridge us? Do you want this one?
No, I would like this one first. And for those who can't see past my head, sorry. First of all, I do want to say it's an honor to be here. Like some of you here, I'm a lifelong resident of Buncombe County, and I'm an Inca jet through and through, and I know that there's some folks over here that's Inca jet. But to see the thought and care and the horsepower, the intellect that's gathered here is very exciting and makes you feel good that, hey, Buncombe County's fine. We're going to do great. Now, I'm the new man with BSNC, and so they said, guess what you get to do? And so that's, this is what I'm going to do. Yeah, let's go to the next one, Nate, the one that's kind of far out. This is our major gas line. This is the T-1 line that is going up into Asheville, and as you can see, it extends on west towards Cherokee. And then also, if you don't look at this part, so somehow you have to put that out of your mind. You see it loops around to Marion. One of our concerns early on, again, three years ago or so, was the fact that this is a single feed into Asheville. And I can rely on Chad to verify. One thing you don't want is a single feed going anywhere. You want to have a loop. So we're in the process of designing a 35-mile connector that starts in Forest City and goes to Marion. That's what the new guy gets to do, gets matured and will be involved in. But in any event, that gives us a loop. It gives us more, an efficient flow of our gas. If we have a problem at some point, we can backfeed. This is important for Asheville in particular. We now have a two-feed system that comes in in case something goes wrong along the way. Otherwise, we were in a bit of a bind, and so we didn't want that to happen. So that's where we are. This is being built, has to be built by the end of 2019. So by the end of 2019, we will have a full loop for the western part of North Carolina. And we can go to the next mechanic slide. Part of that, as you know, we're bringing gas into the Duke Power Plant. And if you look in your packets, we created a slide for everyone to show where we're starting. Our graphics people produced this.
We'll send you the bill for that.
Jason, thanks. I was like, man, we're using that. So our folks created about five minutes ago. Where you see this construction, we're pulling off the line that we're calling T-72. Now, fortunate for some of us that live in the Canler area, this is going to be going right down the bar road. So what you see at this point, this is a corridor we're surveying right now. We're talking with landowners. We're trying to find the most efficient way to run the line, keep it as short as possible to be good stewards of our money, public's money. We want to make sure that all of this is a good design. So we're at the design stage. However, this has to be in place very soon. It goes from the Duke Power Plant to the Inca AB Tech site. So those of you, yeah, those of you who saw that go in where we bore it under the railroad, that's where we're tying in. That's a new substation. From that point, it goes from being our T-72 line. These are just random numbers that get produced by the computer. It connects to the line that goes out to Cherokee. So now Cherokee has a better feed, a more substantial feed that's going out to the western part of the state. So T-72 involves a 12-inch line, which is a large pipeline, and we want to go as much off corridor, off of roadways, cross-country as we can. However, there are places where you just can't do that. So you do have to get on the road. Most of the folks at the panel table here, we work with closely and have a good relationship with, even Troy. And we've, I'm not going to say that because I actually have something I talked to Troy about later, but so Troy's good too. But that is where, that's where our T-72 line is going. So this will allow us to have more gas, a steadier, more reliable gas feed into the city of Asheville.
Question.
Yes.
Slide, I think it's before this one.
Yeah, I think, so the main gas line is on the north side of I-40.
Yes.
Going to Clyde.
Yes.
Why did it go on the north side of I-40 when everybody lives on the south side of I-40?
I can't answer. That was long before I got there, but a lot of that has to do with, at that time, what was being built, where the needs were at that time. Don may even address that a little later.
I know that line, when it was run to Kent back in the early 60s, it was, it was run cross-country because it was a large size transmission line, similar to what Mike's talking about with the T-72 line. So there wasn't, I guess, at the time, I don't know that there was a residential service reason why we ran that line. You know, that was in the early 60s.
He was trying to count on Kansas.
Yeah, he was trying to get, he was trying to.
Trying to get to Kent, yeah, trying to get to the plant.
Trying to get pipeline.
Trying to get to the paper plant. Okay, so now that makes sense. So now you're at the Inca Red Light. What's the plans for coming on out west?
We're simply tied into that same line that's going out west.
So I'm talking about south of I-40. I mean, is there, is there natural gas?
South of Canler, we're actually feeding off of Sardis Road right now into part of that, and we also have stations along Sand Hill Road feeding in that direction. But we also have, you know, here we have the Blue Ridge Parkway, we have the Pisgah National Forest, we have a lot of areas that we just can't get into.
Between that, between the Pisgah National Forest and the exit, and Inca Light, there's a zillion people, somewhere under a zillion.
Well, we had it close to zillion.
It's close to zillion. So you went to Inca, so you know what a zillion is, right?
I take my shoes off.
We do have some service out.
I hear that all the time, that's why I'm bringing it up. I mean, I hear it all the time about getting the gas out in that area.
Right, I mean, we serve the Canler School around that far in the county now.
Not at 151 at all, right?
In Canler, yes, but not out. Spending out won't get one nowhere. Okay.
All right, thanks.
So just a question on the new lines. So there's the line from Forest City to Marion, that's all brand new. It's a brand-new connection.
Absolutely.
From Marion to Black Mountain to Asheville, that's an existing.
Correct.
Line. And so in terms of the Duke Combined Cycle Project, that's being made possible because of the line from Forest City to Marion? I guess I'm still a little unclear. What's the capacity expansion that allows the combined cycle plant to have enough fuel?
Two new lines.
Little pipe to big pipe.
We did. What's been put in so far, this line from there all the way to that, to the Asheville thing, we've been in 76 miles of new pipe. We have a 24-inch line that runs from Forest City, King's Mountain to.
Just parallel to the existing line. It's an expansion of that that's really going to provide you.
There's actually two lines that went in. We actually ran two parallel lines to that corridor to increase capacity. This just increases reliability.
Got it, thanks. All right, other?
Natural gas.
Questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Jason, thank you for the slide.
You're welcome. Anything to help.
Thank you all.
I do have one other question, just maybe for Tom, actually. So, and I'm sure Joe and Robert, you guys hear this question from time to time too and probably know a lot more about it than I do, but you know, I hear people asking about the, you know, Joe's asking about natural gas extensions out in the Inca and Canler area. So I also hear that question come up periodically with MSD. So, you know, so Tom, you're saying the policy is, you know, MSD's not going to speculatively expand the system. You know, you kind of want, you want to invest your resources in taking care of the system we have, and if, but if developers come in, then you can, you know, kind of partner. So I guess two questions. One is on the Inca Canler area specifically. I've heard people talk about feasibility studies having been done in the past or maybe they should be done in the future. I've never been totally clear on what's been done or not done, but I guess first to clarify that, have there been some feasibility studies done of expansions in that, in that area? I mean, I've heard just one idea of like going all the way to Canton, but I think really the goal from folks in that area is to just get more extensions out into the, you know, that area of Buncombe County.
We did, I think it was Michelle Wood, who was inquiring about this several years ago, and pursuant to that, we did develop an estimate for, you know, for providing sewer out, how much it would cost to get out, and I'm going to have you all help me because I'm not that familiar with that, to that light, wherever the service station was supposed to be, I guess, you should call me. But to get it out at that point.
As to 151, you're talking about.
Yeah. So it was quite expensive, and it's sort of cost prohibitive to make a jump that large without some type of funding mechanism.
Right.
So that's kind of where it is now.
Okay. So it wouldn't have, right, so it would've been pretty expensive. There are obviously a lot of customers out there, but not, it would've taken a long time for the papers.
Another area is it's smaller jumps of gravity. You know, a developer come in here and then you extend it there and you extend it more and then, you know, that was, right now, that's the point of interest. And by the way, there's people in the interim, you know, that can be served, but yeah, actually running that line and providing, running that line is really the quandary at this point.
Right. MSD couldn't justify that investment just, right, compared to like taking care, replacing existing lines on your.
Right. Like I said, our surrounding mission is to actually increase the size of the existing lines that that's going to tie into for that development and the plant and all that type of thing. But we'll participate in the lines that go out there to the extent of our policy, which is, you know, I explained some of those.
The other, the other thing I've heard about that from time to time is that there might be, you know, grant funding from like Appalachian Regional Commission or agencies like that to fund different kind of infrastructure projects. Do you guys see that happening or is it, the funds that you have to work with are essentially the funds that you generate from, you know, the customer base, all of us who pay the bills? Are there opportunities out there that, for doing things like that for investments?
There used to be a long time ago. They've since dried up largely. I guess CDVG money was available in, you know, for certain projects and that type of thing, but that's largely dried up. We have, example, there's some money coming, but this is the, the.
Abidam?
Abidam.
Abidam project is probably one of the few that we have an outside money in. Rest of it is just our existing customers' money. So to spend, in order to make go in that direction, then we'll have somebody over on the other side, east side going, oh, you know, how about us over here? So, but, you know, there are, you know, other ways you could do it piece by piece, I guess, over time.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for the question.
Tom, one thing on that I need to understand better. You had mentioned that you'd go in with some developers that come in to upgrade line, right? Now, and then you said as new ones come in, they will help fund. Where does that go? Back to MSD or to the developer?
To the original developer.
Original developer.
Yeah. So what kind of answers? Not many have availed themselves to that, but it's, that is, that's a very good point. That is one mechanism that we have that would assist that. But you'd have to have a pretty good anchor at that far end to fund the initial capital so that, and then, and knowing that he probably would recover that in 10 years if that was a really ripe-for-growth area and people wanted to tie on, then it would, you know, might be worth the investment. But again, that's speculative and that's not, you know, that's not something that we would, yeah, put away.
Chris, it's like.
But you've got, you've got public sewer.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
South of 74. They put a pump station in and then put a line across mountain downhill, paid for that to make it work for MSD to.
Right. Excuse me, they, they paid for the pump station in the last.
Yes, yes. And they actually paid a fee, this is at the time when we did allow pump station, this was a while ago, they actually paid a fee for that thing to be converted over to gravity when that was available. They have a pump station fee that's probably close to $10,000 sitting in Escarrow, and that pays for the pump station.
So.
Close that goes there.
Right.
Can you explain what, like the challenge, like what the ASPCA had to do when there weren't lines?
They're on separate.
Right, yeah.
They're, yeah, that was a good example of it being a little too cumbersome for the type. Now, ASPCA doesn't use that much water and therefore have sewerage waste enough for it to make sense for them to run a line all the way across that. We weren't, we weren't over on that side of the highway on 26.
Right.
To do a crossing of that sort over there. And they're high on the hill there, so it was really just directly to that place. Had it been sort of lower down and on a long stream feature, then it would've. Had it been sort of lower down and on a long stream feature, then it would've been on our master plan line to us to participate in it. For that particular property, it wasn't, so it made a lot more sense to go.
And that wasn't onerous on them at all?
I'm sorry?
That wasn't a problem for them at all to do that?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't you mention Aventine and Clayton Road, what they had to do with Sunshine Chevy, and they brought a pretty sizable line down from, wasn't it, Frabard, across the river? To service the, the picture you had up earlier was actually the Aventine Apartments on Longsholls?
No, I'm not familiar with that.
Okay.
On Longsholls, Aventine.
Aventine Apartments?
Whereabouts?
Right as you cross the river.
We're more about those church.
I don't know why it would've been any longer than a, just a direct line to them. We have lines, we have a 24-inch on the south side of it, we've got a line going through Duke Energy's property as well, and we have lines going all the way over. That was a very localized line, if they ran a line, it was just a typical development line to their property, maybe an 8-inch, it wasn't a larger interceptor of sorts that would open it up for a whole basin.
So that was just an example of like the former ETJ where it was a line that was run down, so anyway, just thought I'd throw that out there as an example.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are plenty of developments that have much shorter runs.
Okay.
Yeah, constantly we have extensions to the system, like I was saying, just on the edges of our existing system, they'll, they'll be runs of 200, 300 feet of 8-inch to a development of 100 apartments and that type of thing. Largely, they are not typically larger lines that are trunk lines serving a whole basin. They're typically served in their particular area, or maybe somebody directly next to them. When you get into the larger lines going up in sub-basins, that's where you get into the big participation with MSD, and then we'll actually design it right, get the right of way and provide financial assistance to upsize the line and that type of thing. That's where you hit the real money. But, I mean, things have changed, as you all know, with development. It used to be everything was, you know, everybody was coming to the sewer district because sewer was so expensive that that was the biggest thing they had, because you got to lay it on grade. With the land prices that have gone up, these guys don't blink, and, you know, they don't blink, you know, they'll come in, you got a million dollars to get to your site, they're throwing it down, they're throwing it down Woodfin just to get a, they're doing a river crossing for their development, and it's not even that big of a development, so, yeah, it's changed.
All right. Any other questions from commissioners now? All right, Nate?
Okay, so we can, we can go back and we can finish the presentation, and of course, a few new panels have to go, we understand we're running for a while today. Okay, so we've, we've seen a number of slides today, we've heard from industry experts. What does that mean for us? Obviously, we're here for a purpose, and that's to talk about future growth. As we continue to see the urban area of Asheville and the other municipalities grow, we run into, again, the divide between what's an urban and a rural level of service. So on our fringes, we're going to see those more urban amenities that take place with the water and sewer. It's amazing to think just how often that's taken for granted. You know, the phone call I mentioned early was somebody calling about the utilities being available in Barnersville. It happens every day, so it's important to continue to point that out. So some of the newer things we're, we're seeing take place that the county, it's kind of newer for the county, is the opportunity to work with NC DOT when they do widening a Mills Gap, or, I think of, there's already sidewalk out on North Louisiana, that's actually maintained by the city of Asheville as part of an interlocal agreement, and we'll continue to have opportunities to see local matches, for instance, in the Mills Gap, to be able to allow for sidewalk when it makes sense to allow and give pedestrians the opportunity, not just vehicles. Trail system, or greenways, and also other multimodal options. One of the things you're going to be seeing come to your guys' attention at the May 1st meeting of the commissioners is traffic impact studies. You know, all, most development that's of the threshold that requires it goes to the Board of Adjustment now. Well, the Board of Adjustment is, that's, that's probably one of the most difficult boards to be on in the county. I mean, they're oftentimes in the newspaper, they're shown on WLOS, and it's a tough position to be in. Well, one of the things we've been seeing is that it's, it's been particularly hard for them to make a decision on some of the more controversial apartment projects. I can't tell you the last apartment project in Buncon County that was not controversial. We've got one coming up on the agenda on Wednesday, and what we're seeing a lot of is estate lots, vacant tracts, they're parcels that are very near to the city of Asheville and the other municipalities, utilities are available, but folks, just, a lot of people just don't want to see development next door to them. I mean, it's, it's, remember the CSOL? It's the delicate balance that we have to play, but we really start having to think about, when we look at the cross or the amoeba, what do we have left to develop? If we want to keep the development out of the sensitive areas that are on the side of the mountain, or on the ridge tops, or out of the flood plain, we have to look with what's left. So we're going to bring you a text amendment that basically says anything that's over the threshold of 75 units, multi-family, or a, in the, in the near future, a subdivision will require a traffic impact study. It can cost as much as, if you think about what you're getting for home prices in Asheville, it can cost as much as a new roof. Well, I mean, that's not too much considering the cost of one single-family home in this county these days. But what it can do is it can actually help a developer, it can help residents understand, because the big thing we do today too is education, but it can also help a developer, maybe they need a, a deceling, maybe they need a small improvement, maybe it helps with traffic flow in their apartment complex overall. So this is something, while it's not required, it's something we can do, it's within our toolbox. The other thing that we're looking at, and this is participation with Land of Sky, Erica and Matt can speak to this, is we're looking at the potential to do what's called corridor studies. This involves multiple jurisdictions, but it gives you the opportunity to look at our high-impact corridors, 26 or some of the other highways, and it allows us to study them and see what options are available for future growth. So Joe brought up a really good point earlier about what can we do about, you know, just the small things. We're undergoing a website, and you're right, a lot of the phone calls we get have to do with, hey, I want to see this project, what does it look like? Let's put in a, let's put in an infrastructure portal, let's put in links to these representatives that you see before you today. We're on the phone with them every day, every day of the week, but a lot of the public, and since we serve as the conduit, we can, that's something small we can do, and we're willing to do it. And let's better prepare our boards and commissions to make informed decisions. If the Board of Adjustment doesn't feel comfortable because they feel like they're between a rock and a hard place, let's give them a traffic study. Let's give them a small tool that's within our purview to help them, and that's, that's what we're going to bring in before you. So where do we go from here beyond those small things? Well, one of the things that we're, we're seeing that's helpful is to incentivize density by rewarding smart and sustainable projects. Projects that go above and beyond, projects that include sidewalk, projects that include, you know, if you have utilities available, we give you a break, we give you smaller lots, and what we have to be careful for is these speculative days, we're starting to see some of the traps that we saw in the development in 1.0. So we do have methods in place to assure that infrastructure is appropriately available. We've got the community ordinator development, that was the East Haven, that's the MHO project out in Swanonoa. It gives developers a menu of options, and it allows them to put forward affordable housing or green development options. We're building two bus shelters out in Swanonoa right now, they are under construction, you can drive out there on 70 and see them. So these, these are things that are within our purview, we have a new development, it's called a conservation subdivision. What does that do? Say you have a piece of property and you're out in the area of Kane Creek, well, there's quite a bit of flood plain there. So what that does is it says, okay, you can build your new subdivision, and we're going to, we're going to try to reward you based on your ability to stay out of the flood plain, stay out of those more environmentally restrictive areas. What can we do further that's within our power, that's not relying solely on enabling tools from the General Assembly, because things are changing, they change every day that the Assembly is in session. So let's focus more on what we can do. We also talked a little bit about, at our last meeting, our work session, about extending the allowance and manufacture of factory homes in other zoning districts. So see that part that says LWP 75, 76? If you look at your land use plan, there's some, there's some flags included. This is the planning bible, this is what we adhere to. Every time we bring you guys a zoning amendment, a text amendment, we go to this book and we start at page one, and we go all the way to the end. We make sure that what we're proposing is in compliance with this plan, because ultimately, this plan is enforced, and until we do a new update, this is what we have to go by and present to you. So with the, the extension of the manufactured factory housing, we will be looking at that with your direction and potentially bring a text amendment within the coming months. It would go to the Planning Board first, and then it would go on to the Board of Adjustment based on our last work session, and I'll wait to hear from you guys again if we feel that, that you thought that that's something we should explore. Now, there's going to be some controversy associated with that, and on page 75 and 76 with your yellow flag, it mentions sort of the history of where we are with that, with Buncon County in the past. I do also want to mention one other thing, if you flip the next page, if everybody's seen HGTV, you've seen the big wave, the newest, coolest, ultimate thing to do is hitch up a shed on wheels or a small factory, well, depends on how you define, I'll correct myself, but there's this thing called the tiny home fab. We have literally fielded calls where we have folks that have gone out and bought a shed at Home Depot or Lowe's, set it up in their backyard, called that their tiny home, it doesn't need a single code, it creates a nightmare scenario. There's also a big push, folks want to do RVs, they want to set those up. Problem is, those don't meet any kind of code requirements, they don't need any of the energy code, and the other thing that we're running across is folks are literally either piping their sewage to God knows where, setting up an outhouse, so when we, I would say that every week we field at least five to seven phone calls regarding tiny homes, which we're not even likely to use that term, or RVs. This section deals with that on the next page. We talked a little bit about cottage developments, these are the, these are the smaller developments that have actually been successful in Asheville. Right now, they're allowed, but you do have to go forward with the conditional use permit process. We'd like to explore the opportunity to look at smaller scale development and not require it to have to go for, for a public hearing. If we've got the infrastructure to do it, let's, let's encourage those smaller mixed-use developments as more of an affordable local option for some of our local developers and builders to do that without having to go, if it's appropriate, without having to go to the conditional use permit and require a public hearing. That's, that's another thing you can do. You can certainly give us direction on that. We constantly evaluate our zoning and subdivision ordinances for improvements. There was a gentleman at our last meeting that expressed some frustration with our subdivision ordinance, that's to be understood, that's the, that's the CSOL, but I will say this, we also have to make sure we're not getting taken advantage of, we're going to make sure that the fire marshal can get to a site and there's adequate infrastructure, because what ultimately happens is someone moves here from Florida, the same person that probably called about the Barnersville utilities, and says, what do you mean I don't have access? Or what do you mean this is substandard? So we're always trying to evaluate, what's that mean for, say, right now you may sell that to your brother or your sister, but down the road is to say your brother or sister isn't going to sell that to somebody from out of town. I understand you have shared access now, we want to make sure you have access in perpetuity. So just to let you know, we are constantly evaluating those ordinances, and we're looking to you when we need to adjust those accordingly. The other big thing, and the asterisk means the potential for controversy.
A lot of.
Interesting. So.
You need an emoji for that.
We can do emojis next time.
I think you need an emoji.
I think we have plenty of millennials in our office that want to do that. Embracing density. So this is the D-word conversation. If we want to look at affordable housing, and if we really truly want to look at how we're going to move forward, and that's why apartment projects are so controversial, but they are so necessary. Even when we did the Williams Baldwin project, I remember getting at least four to five complaints about the traffic from the teachers. So we see it at the smaller scale, we see it at the larger scale. The point is, we handle a lot of complaints and we're prepared to do so, but we do want to make you aware of what the issues are. Okay, so this last one would represent a massive sea change from all the way we do business now, but we want to put it out there because we want to give you guys all the options and all transparency. Conditional zone, the city of Asheville, other municipalities within the state of North Carolina do it. It would basically put development review in your guys' ball court from the Board of Adjustment. I would say from a professional planning perspective, I think some communities overuse it and they rely on it way too heavily. I think we have a process, and I think you'll hear from land use attorneys, developers, that works. We're never going to get rid of the controversy. If the Board of Adjustment doesn't hear it, you're going to hear it. We hear it now, you get the emails, you forward them to me, we answer the emails, we answer the phone calls, we're just throwing it out there because we want to give you guys all the options and tell you our, we're doing a state of the state, this is where we are. And the last thing I'll say is that the land use plan, first question that's asked is, well, when do you update the land use plan? It's also referred to as the comprehensive plan. Well, there is no exact number, there is no exact date. Right now, there's still a lot of good information and this plan is still applicable. What my gut feeling is, we might get three to four years out of it, but it's important to mention that this is the most important guiding document from a planning perspective. We're just kind of putting that out there, and I think that's a good place to stop and hear from the commissioners. Maybe there's some open dialogue with the, with the panel you have before you, but I'm going to stop talking, and I'm going to listen to what y'all have to say.
All right, great, thanks, Nate. All right, I'll, I'll go. The, you know, so just one thing I would like to just kind of speak up for, because there's a lot of great ideas up here, things that we can, we can work on, and one, one other one that I would like to make a plug for, because you know, I mean, I think we're, we're in this community where we know there's going to be a lot of growth, right? So it's really kind of about where's it going to go, what kind of growth is it going to be, you know, there's, but there's, the population's going to grow by 40,000 or 50,000 people over the next couple of decades, barring some kind of major, you know, change to what people are expecting to happen as part of the world. So, so it's really about what the growth is going to be like, not whether we're going to have, have it, and so I think that. And so I think that, you know, when we look at our, you know, our goals for, you know, this is a lot, this kind of goes back to the stuff with the clean energy, energy efficiency, things like that. There's gonna be, you know, thousands and thousands of new units built, through apartments, single-family housing, new buildings. You know, the Energy Innovation Task Force looked a lot at this stuff and obviously there's been a big focus on how do we, you know, do energy efficiency on our existing housing stock? And there's great work going on in that arena. There's gonna be a lot of new construction too, and a pretty high percentage of the total development out there in the next 20 years will be stuff that will be new construction. So I think it's great, I think it'd be great for us to do what we can to encourage new construction to meet, you know, the best energy efficiency goals that we can. We know that we cannot require anything above the state building code. The state building code is basically the law of the land across the state, so we can't set different standards, but we can encourage it. And so, and I was gonna say something, Jason walked out, I was gonna say something nice about Duke. Duke actually has, you know, as we've looked through all these different Duke programs and the Energy Innovation Task Force, one of the things everyone was sort of struck by as we studied it is that Duke actually has really good incentives to encourage green building practices in new construction. So I would be really supportive of us doing some things in our permitting department to also offer some more local incentives from the county standpoint, because I think between what we could do locally to encourage it and what Duke does to encourage it, you know, we could see a large percentage of the new construction in our area use really great practices. We've already got a very strong, forward-looking building community in Buncombe County, and I think if we give them the right, you know, give them the right encouragement resources, then a very high percentage of this new growth we see is gonna be very efficient. So that's one thing I'd like to make a plug for as we think about policies going forward. Other questions or thoughts from other commissioners? Jasmine?
Thanks, this is all fantastic. Could you go a little deeper on the cottage developments issue? Just appreciated that introduction and a little more there.
Sure. So it came about, and I think Alan Vines back there from, do you remember what year the city instituted the cottage? Was it '07?
Yeah, '05, '06.
Okay. So it was a way to allow like a small, like, you know, seven to 12 unit, typically smaller homes, arranged in usually like a courtyard pattern where you would, you drive in, you park to the side, and they were so dense that it was just easy to walk to, kinda like a garden apartment feel, and you might have a shared courtyard in the middle. This might be particularly palatable to our retiring boomers. You know, that's another thing we gotta think about is our generational changes too. So this would be, the ability would be, you could do it now, but it requires this public hearing. Can we look at it from the perspective of, if you've got the utilities there and it's up such a small scale, can we bring that to just a permit or use with special requirements? That's what the USSR means, it's not Russia. Use correct, subject to special requirements.
Okay. And are you seeing people wanting to do this with more frequency, or do you think if the process was streamlined, that that might help?
I think so at this juncture, because we're getting enough folks that want a single-story living, or their pattern has changed enough, where it could also be arrangement where like a family member lives in a smaller like garage apartment to the side of like a larger, it just gives people the options in a more typically affordable or workforce pattern development that doesn't have to go to a conditional use permanent process.
Thank you.
Hey, my question is, I was glad to hear you mention affordable housing. By most of the area I represent, the city of Asheville, it's so expensive, you know, the bill to live in the city of Asheville now. We see that a lot of the people who can't afford to live in Asheville wanna move out in the county. And I think when we look ahead for the future, we need to make sure that we're doing a good job of planning to include affordable housing, to make it easier for people to move, you know, in the county and not leave, go down to Madison, McDowell, you know, leave in the county. And I see taxes leaving with them, you know, for man, really.
That's an excellent point. Your new ex-urban, actually one of the things highlighted there, listen to this. The decisions to live in Exurbia may not always reflect preference. In many areas, home buyers are driving until they qualify for affordable housing. So when my wife, who is the planner at Marion, says, hey, we're seeing a little development, well, guess what that means? Well, PSNC sees the writing on the wall with the movement also of the gas line there. The next area for push is gonna be, that's one of the areas, ID, it's gonna be Old Ford. Old Ford's just on the cusp, it's gonna be Marion. It's more into Lester, it's Fairview, so otherwise, we're pinched and pulled, we're flooded, we're constrained. It's a great point. And that's why we included this law.
So I'll give my plug again on the manufactured housing unit. I think it's very important up here to remember that this is new construction only. New construction, multi-section is what the planning department's looking at. And when you talk about cottage homes, even in the city, but if you're doing them out in the county, there's no easier application or better application, you know, for manufacturing factory build, you know, in four to six, you know, unit arrangements in little cottage areas, slapboard, you know, very, very simple construction and, you know, for less than a hundred thousand dollars for a lot of those units excluding the land. So, you know, as we move forward, you know, and I appreciate that it is being moved forward. You know, in some of these neighborhoods, people will stay in those neighborhoods if they're allowed to be able to get a home that fits in that neighborhood as well as affordable. Keep pushing it.
Yeah, we wanna bring you a variety of patterns. In fact, we found, we had a discussion with a gentleman the other day, and there's one manufacturer in South Carolina that is meeting the building code with these smaller cottage units and it's modular construction, but we met with a gentleman the other day, I don't necessarily know that it's affordable, but the retiring boomers seemed to like this idea of the, let's just say tiny home looking units. His product was affixed to a permanent foundation and they met the building code, although what he was telling us is that it was a hundred thousand dollars for one of these units and I think you mentioned last time, they are trendy but expensive sometimes. And he said that on top of that, you gotta pay him five hundred dollars a month for basically a fee to be in one of these communities. They just had a grand opening down in Flap Rock.
Oh, I know some people that went there, or Fairview, yeah.
And, you know, some of the boomers, you know, they like that because it's just a way to retire and not have to worry about long maintenance and, you know, those sorts of things.
Well, I mean, you got two different things. Just remember when you're looking at manufacturer, the reason you're looking at manufacturer versus modular is there's 10 to 15, almost twenty thousand dollars in difference in some setup issues. And, you know, you're not gonna be able to tell the difference between the two homes. So that's why we're moving towards that.
Yes, and we put the note in there about the design standards that are within our purview, not ones that the legislature stripped down, that we'll bring you and we'll run it through the planning board.
But exploring cottage developments, smaller, you know, manufactured, new construction manufactured home, I mean, San Diego, California's doing it, you know, and so cottage development is a good step to pursue along with, you know, allowing multi-section, energy efficient, you know, manufactured homes.
Sure. And if it's an option available, we wanna bring that and we wanna make sure that our...
All you gotta do is design it.
Code of confidence.
Draw it, just use that product and it'll be affordable. So, I'm done.
I am ready.
Go ahead.
Excuse me.
Go for it.
First thing is I'm not proposing. Second thing is seventy-five homes to go out for a study when you gotta have 300 in the city. This is turning into a disaster, is what it's turning into. And you have to go out seventy-five homes to be able to do a study that these gentlemen basically can tell us if the roads are handling it or not, because when people call me, I tell them, we don't do roads. We don't have a road. We don't need to discuss the road. That's the problem. You discuss the road with the state, they own the roads. Property, people own the property. Now, 2009 has come about. This is not the city of Buncombe, this is the county of Buncombe. Well, I might be wrong, but making all these rules that we're looking at to tell people what they can do and they can't do is getting out of hand, again. I'm not following the system, you know, you used to work there, but we're not, this is not gonna turn into whatever their little book turned into. We don't have a zoning deal, it was good. The people that had trailers that live in, now people have trailers, if they move out, you gotta get a house there. It worked back then, like ain't it working now? But, you know, people that move here and they wanna change something, they don't need to move here. If they wanna come here because that's what they like to do, you know, Sweden Creek Road, they're getting ready to widen it, well, they're putting apartments out there. But I live on 74A, and they raise cane about them apartments to fill the hill. Don't bother me, it'll be no red light, no nothing. Gonna have a wreck every now and then, but we have wrecks up the mountain. But I am totally against everything that we're trying to do here to tell people what they can do. Period. This is Buncombe County. I came here fifty-three years ago. I did wanna change it. We got people on this board that comes here that wants to change what we're doing in this county. We got people coming here that's lived here ten years that don't own apartments, and we got people that don't wanna look at a house on a steep slope that live on a steep slope, because they don't want their view of it. Now, that's just where I'm at. I'm probably old, senile, and what I think is probably wrong. We've had enough problems in Buncombe County, we don't need anymore. We don't need any more. This whole list up here, half of it's useless in my mind. Seventy-five units, houses, you know, it's just like talking, putting up there mobility, you put bicycles, we got more cars than we got bicycles. Mr. Presley and myself, a bicycle comes across the crosswalk on Merriman Avenue and go. Put a tag on them. This one back here needs a tag on it, they need to pay tax on it. They need a helmet and they need to ride on the road like anything else. That's mobility. Give them a road rider. Don't let them run through, across streets, across anything else. But that's where I'm at, thank you. We're not gonna turn this into the city of Asheville, not as long as I'm here. I will fight for this county, I will fight for the people of the county, I hear from them, and I hear dearly from them. But we're outruling everything that's happening. Every time I look, we're gonna have a different rule. We got a planning board. We don't need to make a decision. This decision's made the other day that turned into a bad deal, turned up in the newspaper that our commissioners did. Bad deal. We don't, and that's, and that's just where I'm at. I appreciate everybody in here. And I can't hardly believe that y'all put seven hundred thousand dollars in this energy efficient deal and then we're out searching for more money. I thought it was gonna be just a simple little deal, but it's not simple. Jason, not simple at all. So, you know, I live in a house that I, about twenty-seven years ago, it was energy efficient then, it's still energy efficient today. You know, only thing I see is wrong is where Joe Belcher lives, he's got a different park company, the Park House Mall. You know, and thanks for your time, but all this right here, take half of it off and we might be able to do something. But it's worthless in my eyes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And I think to start with what the chair said about working with developers and encouraging them however we can for affordable housing, and, you know, the two realities, the land is so expensive and as soon as anybody, whether they live here for five minutes or fifty or something, you know, density is gonna go near them, they react and that's just part of it, and I've kind of gotten used to it. If we really have a commitment to affordable housing, then we have to educate the public about why we're determined to do it. So, thanks for all this.
Yeah, and in fact, a lot of it's just education, so...
Any increasing density.
Right. And the gentleman that, you know, you received an email about, I gave a call and he said, you know, I said, well, sir, just like, you know, your neighborhood was sort of built and at the time it probably looked definitely like it was impactful, but he ultimately understood and said that he was actually from Florida, just moved up here from Florida, but was originally from upstate New York. So it just gives credence to the whole joke around the planning department, most calls we get don't originate in the 828 area code. So we try to make adjustments and again, back to the CSOL, just because you're from another area, we sort of have to manage that expectation of, I understand that's the way you used to do it where you're from, but this is Buncombe County and we do have to balance the needs of our urban citizens as well as our rural citizens. And we don't have just one, we have both, so we're really trying to find that middle ground.
Well, and whether someone's been here for fifty years or five days, if they're living here, they're still citizens with equal measure.
Other questions or feedback?
Thank you all so much for your time and the work you do every day. Thanks for organizing this, learned a tremendous amount today.
It's a great group, actually, it was very helpful.
Thank you for what you do, we appreciate it.
You know, just one other thought I would just leave for the day is, you know, I think this whole issue of annexation and the growth of the county is gonna be just an issue that we're gonna have to continue to look at, not that annexation's coming back, I think the days of like annexation are over, but, you know, one of the things when I was, you know, the whole water issues and the growth of the water system and how we've had all these laws all over the many decades that are very unique to Asheville, again, even like Weaverville and other communities don't have them, but one of the things that really struck me about that is kind of, you know, sort of studying that issue is that, is just how much that has placed our community in a different situation than really, I think, any other community around the state in terms of the municipalities in the county not growing in the way that other municipalities have. Because in most other cities across the state, when developers wanna connect to the water system, they voluntarily annex into the city as a condition of getting water service. And we haven't done that in Buncombe County ever, right? So the only type of annexation, I mean, every now and then there's like an ABC store or some kind of, you know, highly unusual situation like that where someone chooses to annex to, you know, to be able to get a license or something like that. But, you know, in every other city across the state, the normal way that cities grow is just through voluntary annexation as new developers connect to municipal water systems. But we have not done that. And with the other changes by the legislature in recent years that now also limit any kind of involuntary annexation, you know, the corporate boundaries of the municipalities in Buncombe County are essentially fixed, you know, so in thirty years from now, we're gonna have all this new growth in the city limits of Asheville and Weaverville and within all these other towns are gonna basically look exactly like they do today, even though Buncombe County's gonna have fifty thousand more people living in it. Many of them, a lot of them will live in Asheville or live in Weaverville. I mean, the towns are, you know, definitely have a lot of infill development going on, but a lot of it's gonna happen right around the edges of these cities and these areas that were shown on the maps today where we have water and sewer and some other infrastructure, but they're not within any municipal boundaries. And so I think in the, I think in the long run, you know, the question kind of becomes, because a lot of these areas aren't, they're not, you know, they're not gonna, like the areas out in Barnardsville, sure, they, it's unrealistic for them to expect urban levels of service, but these areas where you're gonna start having... levels of service, but these areas where you're going to start having, you know, 10 and 20 units per acre, you know, basically areas that are going to look and act like towns and cities, just like inside the city limits, but which do not have a city council, do not have a town council. How are those areas going to be served in the future? And I don't, and I don't have any great answers to it, but I think it's one of these things that we are going to have to think about and wrestle with in the future in a way that most other county governments around the state don't, because, you know, in other counties, the cities just kind of naturally grow as organization happens, but because of policy decisions, some made a long time ago, some made more recently, we're kind of in this sort of unique situation, I think. So, anyway, I just want to throw that out, you know, I mean, we hear different things, you know, different projects that come in from, you know, INCA and Candler for different, you know, sidewalks that folks want out there, or roads and recreational facilities, and they're all, you know, from other areas, too, Swananoa, and they're all good ideas. They're the kind of things that counties don't typically get involved in, but I think, you know, we're just going to have to think about those things in a way that's a little bit different from other county governments around the state, I think. So, just wanted to put it out there.
Well, let me throw it out here.
Go for it.
I've been here 59 years. Probably lived here longer than any other, you know, commissioner.
No.
You moved out though when you come back.
I was here long before you did.
You moved out to come back.
No, I was only out for college and a day.
But you went from education, I stayed here.
My resume.
No, but I guess what is, back 70s, we all know what has happened downtown in the county for the good, for the good, any way you look at it. But now, I hear the people that come here in the 80s, late 80s and 90s, that are complaining like us homestead people, this is not the Asheville I want to move to. So, I think what you're saying, Brownie, I disagree. If we're wanting to move the city everywhere or the growth of Black Mountain, I think that's where we're going to lose our identity of the mountains, of what we've got. If we become Atlanta or Charlotte, who's going to want to come here? I mean, a lot of people are coming here, but whenever I hear the people of 20 years complaining about what's going on, and the people of 40, 50 years complaining, it's pretty soon the new ones that's moving in here, how long are the trust fund kids going to be able to survive here? You know, how long is their parents going to keep them up? And I guess a great thing we got is the Blue Ridge Parkway and the National Forest that we don't have to worry about that part. You know, there was something up here about we are twice as big. You know, I like facts. We have twice as much acreage, but half of our acreage from Blue Ridge, Parkway, National Forest, and the Billmore State, we don't control none of that, correct? So, we're actually the same size as the county as you was talking about. So, I'm an old-timer, is, I don't want Asheville to get too big, because I foresee what's coming here with all the apartments. The building, I wish that we could mandate, I'll go with Brownie on this, the energy deal, is when we see these new apartments that's two and three years old, that the windows are sweating in them, I don't think that is good energy, I said, Jason. These sidings they've got on them, why are we not putting brick? You look at a lot of our old buildings here, they're not wood, they're brick. They're here for a long time. These apartments, I'm afraid, are going to become eyesore's in 20 years. So, why are we not building apartments that can be attractive 40 years from today? That's just my two cents.
Still Buncombe County, it's not Asheville.
I can't say enough how I appreciate what you've done. I live in a small mountain town in Colorado, and the zoning that they had 30 years ago, 40 years ago, would probably make every commissioner's hair stand on end, but...
Not mine.
Yes, well, yes, but what they've done, what they've done, it looks exactly like it did 40, 50 years ago. So, you know, people, the way we keep everything just as it is, and what's been proven is with zoning, because when you, with the free market, that's when we get rental beach, but this little mountain town, it looks exactly the same as it did 50 years ago, and the zoning was, if you had 80 acres, you could sell 40, but you could never increase the density. But that's how they were able to maintain how it looks now, and it's, I don't think anybody wants that, but that's what they did there.
All right. Hey, any other questions or comments before we adjourn? We're going to have a commission meeting starting at 5:00. So, going once, going twice. I want to thank all of you for taking, I know you took your whole afternoon to be with us, and it's really helpful to hear how all the different plans, you know, kind of look side by side, and so, a lot to think about, and we really appreciate y'all taking the time to be with us. Thank you.
Should we start busy now?